Judiciary and Public Safety. Today is Thursday, December 2nd, 2021, and we're convening this public hearing over the Zoom virtual platform. The time is now 9:35 a.m. and I'm calling to order this public hearing of the committee. Today, the committee will be considering Bill 24-416, the Revised Criminal Code Act of 2021, which was introduced by Chairman Mendelson at the request of the Criminal Code Reform Commission, which is an independent district agency on October 1st of this year. The bill would comprehensively overhaul the district's criminal code to improve its clarity, completeness, consistency, and proportionality, making a code that's more accessible to the general public and reflects district values. This is the committee's second public hearing on the measure, and today we'll be hearing exclusively from individual and organizational public witnesses. If you weren't able to watch our first hearing on November 4th, for context, the district's criminal code was first enacted by Congress back in 1901, well before a home rule. Seventy years later, the council was granted the authority to enact its own criminal laws. However, we've never comprehensively modernized our criminal code, and as a result, it's been ranked one of the worst in the United States. So about 15 years ago, the council required the criminal code reform project to begin. And in March, the agency's final recommendations were unanimously approved and submitted to the council for our consideration. The recommendations reflect years and years of painstaking work by the Criminal Code Reform Commission staff, as well as hundreds and hundreds of pages and a lot of fierce debate by local law school professors and representatives from the Office of the Attorney General, the U.S. Attorney's Office, and the Public Defender Service. Collectively, these parties are known as the Advisory Group. Some of the major reasons the Advisory Group took on this work, namely because our current criminal code suffers from three fundamental flaws. First, it isn't clear. Second, its penalties are completely disproportionate, meaning that some are far too severe for the conduct while others are too lenient. And third, it simply doesn't reflect who we are today. We're going to hear testimony from a number of perspectives in today's hearing that touches on each of these flaws and how the proposed legislation attempts to address them. So now let's briefly go over some logistics for this morning's hearing. Our public witnesses will be joining us on the Zoom platform as attendees, and committee staff will promote you to panelists when it's your turn on the panel. You're also welcome to watch the hearing on the council website, Channel 13, and our office's Facebook page, and jump in and out of the attendee room. If at any time you need any assistance, please use the chat function to reach out to committee staff, and we'll do everything we can to help out. The committee will hold its third and final hearing on the bill on December 16th from 9:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. That hearing will be reserved exclusively for government witnesses to testify, including members of the CCRC's Advisory Group. And finally, if any members of the public were unable to provide live testimony today but would like to share written testimony on the bill, please email that to us at judiciary@dccouncil.us, and the record will close at the close of business on December 24th. We expect that we may have some of my colleagues join us during the course of today, and as they do, I'll certainly give them a chance to make an opening statement. But with that, we're now going to move to our first panel of public witnesses. So what I'm going to do, I think we have everybody already in, but I'm going to call everyone's name, and then we will go follow that order for testimony. So first up, I have Akai Johnson, Acting Director for Reshaping Prosecution Initiative at the Vera Institute of Justice, Halim Flowers, public witness, Ashley Nellis, Senior Research Analyst with the Sentencing Project, James Ziegler, Executive Director of the Second Look Project, Mark Howard, Professor of Government and Law, Director of the Prisons and Justice Initiative at Georgetown University, Joshua Miller, Director of Education, Prisons and Justice Initiative Managing Director, Georgetown Pivot Program at Georgetown University, Ashley Carter, Supervising Attorney with the D.C. Volunteer Lawyers Project, and Matthew Ornstein, Director of Litigation and Enforcement, the Network for Victim Recovery of D.C. So good morning to you all. Thank you all for joining us. Mr. Johnson, I'll turn to you to kick us off.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Good morning. My name is Akai Johnson. I am a D.C. resident and the Acting Director of the Vera Institute of Justice's Reshaping Prosecution Initiative. Vera is a 60-year-old organization that works to transform the criminal, legal, and immigration systems until they are fair for all. The Reshaping Prosecution Initiative works with prosecutors seeking to better pursue safety by reducing their reliance on incarceration, addressing racial disparities, and being more accountable to communities. Prior to joining Vera, I was an Assistant United States Attorney in the district for five years. Although I focused on sex and domestic violence offenses, I prosecuted a variety of crimes, including homicide, narcotic, and firearm cases. As an AUSA, charging mandatory minimums was a regular part of my practice. They were a tool that enhanced our power to resolve cases as we deemed appropriate. I am here today, however, to support their elimination from the criminal code. As an AUSA, we generally use mandatory minimums as leverage to encourage people to plead guilty. They pled guilty, we would drop the mandatory minimum charge. If the crime was severe, or there were concerns that a judge might give a lenient sentence, however, we would maintain the mandatory minimum charge to ensure a punitive outcome that sent a message to others. Our approach assumed that harsh sentencing, of which mandatory minimums are one of the most common examples, deter crime. However, this issue has now been so thoroughly studied, researchers have concluded that it is clear that lengthy prison sentences cannot be justified on a deterrence-based crime prevention basis. Indeed, even the Department of Justice cited definitive research to conclude that the certainty of being caught is a vastly more powerful deterrent than punitive sentences. Moreover, if the district is committed to racial justice, then eliminating mandatory minimums is a necessary step. The pursuit of racial justice requires us to consider racial disparities in evaluating any policy. Mandatory minimums, while not making us safer, disproportionately impact Black people. I prosecuted dozens of cases carrying mandatory minimums. As far as I remember, every single person that I charged was Black. This experience correlates with data. In my role at Vera, we researched the D.C. U.S. Attorneys' Felon and Possession Initiative, which is an example of a mandatory minimum. We learned that although Black people comprise only 47% of D.C.'s population, they accounted for 97% of people charged with felon and possession in Superior Court from 2013 to 2018. In closing, I'm mindful of a Robert F. Kennedy speech. He noted that we need three things to achieve meaningful change: passion to get involved, vision to identify what to do, and the courage to act. I'm grateful that people passionate about safety and racial justice examined mandatory minimums in the district and drafted the proposed legislation as a path forward to correct harm that I contributed to. All we need now is the courage to see it through. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. Next, let me turn to Halim Flowers. Good morning, Mr. Flowers.
Good morning. My name is Halim Flowers. Apologize for the bad lighting. My name is Halim Flowers. I'm a local D.C. resident. I was sentenced under the felony murder, first of all, in the year of 1997. I was charged as an adult at the age of 16 for being aided and abetted to felony murder. Under Title 162301A, I was taken to trial and, even though I was acquitted of remediating murder, first degree, I was also convicted of first-degree felony murder under the accomplice liability doctrine. And even though I was not charged as being an actual shooter and the person who was charged as being the principal in my case had the charges dismissed against him, I was convicted nonetheless under the accomplice liability doctrine and sentenced to two indeterminate lives, 40 years of life and 20 years of life. I didn't shoot anyone. I didn't kill anyone. Unfortunately, I still was charged and held liable because, under the accomplice liability doctrine, it states that I should have a foreseeability that in the commission of a felony, that harm could have came about. So therefore, I would be held just as liable as the principal. I feel like that is unfair and advocate that this practice no longer continues with the accomplice liability doctrine, first-degree felony murder.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flowers. Next, let me turn to Ashley Nellis.
Hi, good morning. My name is Ashley Nellis. I'm a Senior Research Analyst at the Sentencing Project. We were established in 1986 and promote effective and humane responses to crime that minimize imprisonment and criminalization by promoting racial, ethnic, and gender justice. I myself am a nationally recognized expert on the study of life and long-term imprisonment. The Sentencing Project strongly supports the Revised Criminal Code Act of 2021 because of the several features that it has to help scale back extreme prison sentences, which are infused with racial bias and counterproductive to public safety. Specifically, we recommend the elimination of all mandatory minimum sentences, lowering the maximum to 45 years, and allowing judicial sentencing reconsideration after 15 years. These build on similar reforms happening elsewhere, and they bring some of the D.C. criminal penalties closer in line with criminological evidence on public safety. In some cases, the council could go much further. Criminal sentencing in D.C. overwhelmingly affects people of color, particularly Black men. Crime victims are also overwhelmingly on people of color. Researchers have demonstrated that the association of crime with communities of color has favored punitive policies over prevention and rehabilitation. By only stipulating maximum sentences and not minimum sentences, the RCCA would reinstate the judicial ability to tailor sentencing to the circumstances of individual cases. The move from indeterminate to determinate sentences and the push from judges to prosecutors making the decisions has dramatically increased the length of imposed sentences. Mandatory minimums have contributed to D.C. ranking eighth among states in its incarceration rate. Mandatory minimum sentencing allows uneven distribution of justice to spread the transfer of discretion from its rightful position in the judge's power to that of prosecutors. Since 2004, the Sentencing Project has advocated for the elimination completely of life without parole sentences. They are demonstrated empirically to be cruel, costly, and counterproductive. I myself maintain the state and national database on persons serving life, and I can tell you that lifers account for a growing share of our prison population, now standing at 1 in 7 prisoners serving life, even as overall prison numbers have started to recede slightly. We therefore support the RCCA's cap on maximum, though would advocate for a cap much lower at 20 years if possible. I want to briefly offer the three reasons why capping is such a necessary start to scaling back mass incarceration. First, people age out of prime for a range of offenses from pickpocketing to murder. Crime rates for at-risk people rise in the late teenage years to their early twenties and then begin a steady decline that begins in the mid to late twenties. Criminal careers are typically about 10 years long. Second, long prison sentences remove people from society who could be contributing positively to society through their family involvement, contributing to the economy, and participating in civic life. It is a loss to the rest of us when we imprison people for too long. I have come to know many people who are incarcerated and have been imprisoned for decades. Though there are rare exceptions, as a class, these are typically the model prisoners and serve as mentors to younger people entering. They have repented, by and large, deeply for their crimes and grown despite no hope for release. I admire their persistence and their hope. Third, life-in-long prison sentences offer no deterrent value. This is because most people do not expect to be apprehended in the first place, and if they are, they certainly don't know the prison time associated. Added to this is the likelihood that their judgment is compromised by substance abuse and mental health problems. I am grateful for the chance to speak in support of the Revised Criminal Code of 2021. It is time to recalculate our acceptable range, starting at the top. As punishments are recalibrated, here, penalties for less serious offenses will be reconsidered. It is possible, and we recommend that some crimes are responded to without prison at all. Prison is not the only tool in the criminal legal toolbox. D.C., like many states, too often presumes that imprisonment is the only solution. But research, as well as formerly incarcerated people, will easily tell you that it is not prison, but simply the aging process that made the difference. The notion that prison punishment should be no greater than necessary to achieve a legitimate public safety purpose has been one of the central conceptions of our justice system since the Enlightenment. We applaud D.C.'s bold movement forward and look forward to seeing next steps.
Thank you, Ms. Nellis. Next, I'll return to James Ziegler.
Good morning. My name is James Ziegler. I'm the founder and executive director of the Second Look Project, an organization which provides direct representation, support to people seeking sentence reductions under D.C.'s current sentence review mechanisms. Prior to that, I was a criminal defense attorney on the D.C. Superior Court Criminal Justice Act panel, representing innocent people charged with crimes under the D.C. Code. And prior to that, I was a judicial clerk at D.C. Superior Court. I want to first thank the council for holding these hearings and for the opportunity to speak. I also want to praise the thoughtfulness and thoroughness of the recommendations of the CCRC, its willingness to do the hard work revising an entire criminal code that has been long in need of it, and in doing so, its willingness to confront and consider difficult questions of guilt and punishment and proportionality, which can be hard to resolve and about which people can strongly disagree. Our criminal code sentencing provisions and penalty ranges are in many instances grossly out of date, still strongly rooted in an era of punitiveness and rigidity, and have over time proven to be both ineffective and unjust. Many of these provisions are also, to varying degrees, manifestations of the systemic racism that has long defined our criminal legal system and have exacted disproportionate costs on the district's communities of color. And that is true of the code's reliance upon mandatory minimum sentences, exceedingly harsh penalties for some offenses, and for its reliance upon lengthy determinate sentences for which courts currently have no way to reconsider when time and changed circumstances have rendered those sentences unjust. And indeed, that is what we've seen over the last several years as D.C. has expanded its opportunities for Superior Court judges to review and reconsider lengthy sentences, both through the Incarceration Reduction Amendment Act and later through D.C.'s compassionate release law. And our experience with both of these laws has shown us two things. First, that there are scores of people serving lengthy D.C. Code sentences who have been incarcerated in many instances for decades, who do not pose a risk to the community if released and whose ongoing confinement is unjust. This can be either because of a change in individual circumstances or because our notions of culpability and what is appropriate punishment have shifted in the decades since the sentence was imposed. For example, we have frequently seen sentences imposed decades ago, which are much longer than would be imposed today for the same conduct. The second thing our experience with these laws has shown us so far is that mechanisms like these are thoughtful and careful measures which involve extensive litigation and judicial review before someone is released and which do not guarantee release for anyone. It's also important to note that these sentence reconsideration measures, that the sentence reconsideration provisions in this bill are substantive ones and that they reimagine what punishment should look like, what its purposes should be, and recognize that as the people's sentence change over time, as do their circumstances and the views of survivors and their families, that the sentences themselves should be more dynamic and recognize the possibility that a once-just sentence might later require reconsideration. A sentencing regime like this also recognizes the inherent limitations of sentencing as a prospective exercise, as even the wisest and most perceptive judge cannot say with total confidence that the sentence they impose will still be appropriate a decade or two later. Now, my expertise and experience is primarily related to the issue of sentence reconsideration and what that has looked like in the district. I do want to speak briefly about the importance of expanding jury demandability and eliminating mandatory minimum sentences. As a practitioner of trial-level criminal defense in D.C. Superior Court, I observe the consequences of having so many offenses not be entitled to a jury trial. First, unfortunately, the fairness and integrity of non-jury trials often depends heavily on the judge to which a case is assigned, so much so that the judge someone's case gets assigned to can materially affect the decision about whether or not to seek a trial at all. As with some judges, unfortunately, a guilty verdict is an almost certain outcome. Allowing people to demand a jury trial also increases the impartiality and promotes consistency within the criminal legal system. Second, jury demandability counsels restraint on the part of prosecutors, who will then have to decide whether a particular offense is worth trying before a jury and whether or not a jury of community members will be persuaded by the government's evidence. Similarly, the elimination of mandatory minimum sentences eliminates a tool that prosecutors have often wielded in an unduly coercive way, knowing that by charging an offense that carries a severe mandatory sentence, defendants are often compelled to plead guilty to a different offense to avoid the certainty of extreme punishment if they choose to go to trial and lose. Both of these changes will make the administration of criminal trials in the district more fair and foster increased confidence in the integrity of convictions. As people will know that defendants were not driven into a guilty plea by a charge with a steep mandatory sentence or the assignment of their case to a particular judge. Code Reform Commission is to be commended for its recommendations and the bill that has helped to develop, which will make D.C.'s legal system a more modern, just, and equitable one. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ziegler. Next, let me turn to Mark Howard. Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmember Allen. I'm glad to be joining you. I'm a professor of government and law at Georgetown University, where I direct the Prisons and Justice Initiative. Among our many programs, we have the Prison Scholars Program at the D.C. Jail, where we have, of course, many incarcerated D.C. residents who are in our programs and who have passed through our programs. And we also, as you know, run several reentry programs, most notably the Pivot Program and a paralegal program, which are formerly incarcerated people. And what we believe at our core, and this aligns perfectly with the revisions to the D.C. Code, which I strongly support, is that people are capable of rehabilitation over their time of incarceration and of earning the chance to return to society and to become productive citizens. This is something that I've seen personally, through my own classes, through our program, through a number of people, in particular, many who have been IRA beneficiaries who have become extraordinary leaders in our community, and I'm proud that they've been in our programs. And through our work with our scholars, with our Pivot and Paralegal fellows, I've really come to realize that the old D.C. Code is outdated and desperately in need of change. Mandatory minimum penalties may have served a logical purpose at the time in which they were enacted and may make some theoretical sense, but in practice, we've come to see that the people really do change. And to judge somebody in a permanent way based on youthful mistakes is really factually inaccurate and, I think, morally questionable. And so we've seen so many people now who, through education, through positive productive activities that they've undergone while incarcerated and after returning home from incarceration, really show that they deserve a second chance. And we, as a society, and certainly as a city, need to have a new approach in terms of how we think of incarceration and the transformation people are capable of and their preparation for reentry and need for second chances. Similarly, life and life without parole sentences are really something that are from another era. I think that people need hope. They need to have a society that believes in them. And while I would never advocate releasing somebody who's not ready to return safely, and I believe strongly that public safety is our primary goal, I believe we can not compromise public safety while bringing about a system that has more justice and fairness. And again, through our programs, I'm proud that we've really been a part of making that happen with so many of our scholars and fellows. And so, although I don't work particularly with juveniles, I also agree with the provisions that involve changing the situation and age and opportunities for young people who far too often were thrown into a meat grinder of a criminal justice system that was meant for adults. So overall, and I know I'm a professor, I could go on for hours, but I want to be concise and respect your time and the many other excellent people who will be speaking on this panel and throughout the day. But I strongly support, and I think the evidence, and I should add in terms of my research and publishing, that everything points in the direction of a need for reform and why this revision to the D.C. Criminal Code is necessary. So I strongly support it, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you here today.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, let me turn to Joshua Miller.
Good morning, Chairperson Elman, councilmembers, staff, and participants and observers in this public hearing. My name is Joshua Miller. I am Managing Director of the Georgetown Pivot Program, Director of Education for the Prisons and Justice Initiative, and an Assistant Teaching Professor in the Georgetown Philosophy Department. I've been teaching in prisons for a decade and working extensively on reentry issues since 2018. I'm also a ward for D.C. resident. And I want to start by saying that D.C.'s approach to sentencing and incarceration has often been a source of shame for us in the past few decades. Most recently, conditions at the start of the pandemic led to increased judicial oversight of D.C.'s jail facilities. And now, at what we hope is the end of the pandemic, we see reports of deplorable conditions inside D.C.'s central detention facility. So I want to share my pride as a resident in the careful work and thoughtful writing of D.C.'s Revised Criminal Code. If you spend some time with the 900-page Appendix D, where the commission responds to comments and criticisms, often from PDS and OAG, you'll see careful reasoning and thoughtful incorporation of those criticisms throughout. In short, the Revised Criminal Code Act of 2021 is not an activist document, does not tick off wish list items from either prison abolitionists or prosecutors, does not decriminalize drugs, or adopt the Nordic approach to prostitution, or disarm the police. But it does inject some fairness and proportionality into the criminal code so that we can sincerely say that punishments are the just desserts of offenses committed. It gives proportionality, order, and clarity to the thicket of laws that have been enacted over the last century and change. For instance, the RCCA removes some of the most troublesome forms of accomplice liability in felony murder cases, as Mr. Flowers had mentioned, in keeping with an overall effort to tie culpability to subjective mental states, such as intentions, a meta-ethical principle that has widespread support. Failure to heed this principle has led to convictions which shock the conscience, such as people being convicted of murder because the police killed their co-defendant. Wholesale code revision is therefore an important periodic effort, and the Criminal Code Reform Commission is made possible by the work of national cohorts of law professors and practitioners who created the Model Penal Code in 1962 and continue to work to revise it. Since I so often appear before this committee to summarize the problems with discretionary parole and why both the Model Penal Code has given up on it and the District of Columbia should forego it as well, I'm not going to rehash those arguments now. But the fact that the CCRC has incorporated full post-sentencing review for all people who have served at least 15 years of their sentence would make D.C. the first jurisdiction to fully enact the Model Penal Code's recommended revisions on post-sentencing modification, which include provisions for good-time credits, compassionate release, and sentence reductions based on, quote, "changed circumstances of the offense or the offender", which we now call Second Look. We've arrived here after multiple careful experiments and extensions of the incarceration reduction and Second Look legislation, much of which was framed in terms of neuroscientific studies and consensus judgments of the planning capacities and executive functioning of emerging adults. However, as I testified here in March 2019, post-sentencing review was never intended to address these insights from developmental psychology. Rather, it is a response to the failure of four decades of determinacy and truth in sentencing reforms, which have combined to create no meaningful exit for many from our prisons and caused Washington, D.C. to become one of the most punitive states in the country. Discretionary parole is dead because we killed it, and rather than resurrect it, we should pursue a more promising alternative. The Model Penal Code and the D.C... I'm sorry. And the proposed legislation provide two justifications for this novel form of sentencing reduction. First, that our sentences in the U.S. are uniquely and dramatically longer than other Western democracies, which make our system seem cruel, unusually so. And second, that it behooves us to exercise humility and care when making decisions today that will combine to have effects for decades, that we should imbue sentencing with a little bit of the restless and revisionary attitude that characterizes American democracy itself. Facing as we are the twin shames of an absurdly high and racially biased incarceration rate, and evidence that many of the men and women we have incarcerated decades ago have long since rehabilitated themselves, we should take this advice to heart. Sentences should be determinate and fair, but they should also be subject to periodic reconsideration. And the truth is that parole does not work to achieve this and that it cannot be properly secured against public opinion in the way that a judge's review can be. I am heartened by the CCRC's work, given this consideration today, and I celebrate the process upon which you have embarked to review their review and consider proposed revisions to their revision. But I would ask you to spend a bit of time with the 900 pages of comments and replies and allow that to temper any confidence that you may have that we can do it better than they have in considering and weighing the language of this modernization effort. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. All right, and next, let's turn to Ashley Carter.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to be here, Councilmember Allen. My name is Ashley Carter, and I'm a supervising attorney at the D.C. Volunteer Lawyers Project. D.C. VLP is a nonprofit organization that was established in 2008 to provide direct legal advocacy and assistance to low-income to low-income survivors of domestic violence, at-risk children, and other vulnerable individuals. We believe that a life free from violence and abuse is a basic human right, and we work to reach this goal through direct legal services, advocacy, training, and outreach. At the outset, I'd like to say that DCVLP strongly supports the efforts of the DC Criminal Code Reform Commission to give clarity and consistency to the district's criminal code. I think the current patchwork of statutes and case law that we have is inefficient at best and ineffective at worst. And any legal services organization could attest to the necessity of overhauling the code. The commission's efforts reflect an extraordinary amount of time, thought, and hard work. The criminal code in the district is widely understood to apply within our criminal justice system. But I think what is less well-understood by the community is that the criminal code is also widely applied within the civil and family legal systems. And that's particularly within the domestic violence context. When a survivor of domestic violence seeks a civil protection order against their abuser, the survivor herself is responsible not just for proving that the abuser committed an abusive act, but also that this abusive act was a criminal offense. And it's referred to in the statutes as an intra-family offense. So if a survivor of domestic violence can prove that a criminal act occurred, then a judge may issue a civil protection order with all of its entitled protections. But if the survivor does not prove a criminal act, then the judge has no authority to issue an order. And in the family law context, a survivor of domestic violence who proves that such an intra-family offense occurred is entitled to a modified child custody standard. So the law will presume that a parent who committed a criminal offense against the other parent should not share custody of a child unless there's evidence that both the survivor and the child can be protected from that abusive contact. And in the immigration context, for example, a survivor of a violent criminal offense may be entitled to seek legal status under what's called a U-VISA or adjust their immigration status pursuant to the Violence Against Women Act. So for all of these reasons, changes to the criminal code have widespread impacts across the legal system. And as a result of that, it's incredibly important that each of these statutes are clear, understandable, and sensible. I think this is even more important, given how many litigants in our court system lack legal representation, which is often necessary to understand the current version of our law. So we strongly support the adoption of many of the changes in the Revised Criminal Code Act, which I think give clarity to a lot of statutes. But there are some changes recommended by the commission that we think should be given very careful thought as they dramatically change the understanding of criminal acts that have existed in the district for decades. Given the limits of time, I'm just going to focus on a couple that are most concerning. And our written testimony will, I think, flesh this out a little bit more. I'd first like to focus on the changes to assault. So as it currently stands, assault is an offense that's rooted in the common law. And as a result, sort of the law is spread out among these dozens of legal cases. So I do think that adding statutory definitions of assault will provide more clear guidance to both attorneys and the community. But we are very concerned that the RCCA eliminates criminal liability for actions that have long been considered criminal. There are currently three types of assault under the common law: attempted battery assault, intent-to-frighten assault, and nonviolent sexual touching assault. And so attempted battery assault covers what we may traditionally think of as assault, which are situations involving force or violence that cause a bodily injury. Intent-to-frighten assault applies in a little bit of a different situation, where an individual commits some sort of threatening act that causes a person to fear immediate injury and intends to cause that injury. And the RCCA does eliminate that intent-to-frighten assault. I'd just like to give an example of how that might harm survivors of domestic violence. So as an example, if an abuser backs a survivor into a corner, not by using force, but simply approaches her in sort of a menacing manner and then slams his hand against the wall next to her head while he's yelling at her. Under the current definitions of assault, that would be intent-to-frighten assault. And he has committed assault, and the survivor is eligible to seek protection. But under the RCCA's proposed descriptions of assault and threats, he has not clearly committed a crime because there's no bodily injury or communication. So that's just one example of why we think that the assault changes need to be taken very, very seriously. I do realize that I'm running very low on time. I would just like to note that we will also be making a number of recommendations in our written testimony as to changes to stalking, which I also think need to be taken very seriously by the council. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carter. And then, last member for this panel, Matthew Ornstein, let me turn to you.
Thank you, Chairperson Allen, committee members, and your staff for your continued commitment on these issues. My name is Matthew Ornstein, and I'm testifying today on behalf of the Network for Victim Recovery of DC. And I'm testifying today in my capacity as the Director of Litigation and Enforcement. Since May 2012, NVRDC has provided holistic victim services, including free legal representation, to over 5,000 victims in the district. And as a litigating attorney with NVRDC in 2012, and then later on as the litigating director, I have either represented or overseen the representation of many of those victims throughout the criminal justice process. And so for that reason, I'm very grateful to have the opportunity to testify today concerning such transformative legislation. And really, there's so much in this bill, it was really difficult to narrow down precisely what to address here. And some of my concerns relating to, like, the misdemeanor jury process or specific criminal elements are really difficult to express succinctly as they're technical. And so I'll supplement these remarks with a more comprehensive written testimony later on. I just want to be clear, although I do have some suggestions, and you know, just mentioned I have some concerns. NVRDC and I both support this bill generally. And I would really like to thank CCRC for the tremendous years-long undertaking to advance this legislation. Our support comes from a variety of reasons. And as many others have stated here, many of our criminal laws are just decades upon decades old. They're bound by precedent, court rulings that came about as courts and lawyers really struggled to fit our evolving conceptions of criminal justice into a legal regime that comes from, frankly, a view of crime and punishment that's just no longer acceptable today. And so as a result, the language, the concepts, the penalties, they've just grown wild in some places. Definitions are contrary or counterintuitive, some are vague, and some simply produce inequitable, embarrassing results. To victims specifically, predictability and transparency is of the highest import. And while criminal trials will always have an element of uncertainty, it's really upsetting to victims coming into this process to find just how little consistency there can be about major aspects of the criminal justice that intuitively really should not be so mysterious. Crime victims are often in a place where they're trying to adjust to a new, normal way of living after a crime that they've experienced. And every confusing, twisting, surprise, and uncertain component weighs heavily on them and burdens their recovery. There is an omnipresent feeling of always being on edge or always being unsafe that is frequent to victims trying to find their footing in a chaotic and uncertain environment. And this bill does so much to give tangible, sensible, predictable definitions to the elements, the offenses, concepts, and the penalties that comprise our criminal code. It feels like something intelligently and carefully designed, and that is the way that the law should be. Now, all that said, I do have some specific issues to crime victims, and I want to use the rest of my time here to focus specifically on why I find it troubling that the RCCA uses the term complainant in reference to people who have experienced crimes, as opposed to victim, crime victim, or even alleged victim. In DC, right now, we have the Crime Victims Bill of Rights that gives crime victims specific rights and protections in criminal or derivative proceedings. We also have the Federal Crime Victims Rights Act that gives similar but distinct procedural and substantive rights, both in DC Superior Court, but also in the Court of Appeals. We have the Sexual Assault Victims Rights Amendment Act that gives further protection to that specific class of victim. And there are legal privileges and rights associated with sexual assault victim counselors and victim advocates. The DC Superior Court's criminal rules contain specific provisions that relate to victims in criminal cases that affect their rights to be heard, to notice, to privacy, most importantly. And these statutes and rules are not 100 years old or morally outdated. Quite the opposite, the recent, they reflect the proper and unique experiences that victims play in criminal proceedings. Victims' rights has just come a long way in recent years. And very often, the struggle is centered on defining victims as victims and then giving victims standing to enforce their right in court. And all this is to say, victim is already a term of art with a specific meaning and triggering specific rights. And we would like the RCCA to be consistent in that regard. But moreover, I have spent most of my career as an attorney fighting against the influence of just victim blaming in general in our legal culture, whether it's subtle or overt. And here, it is very subtle. But in referring to victims as complainants, it equates those who have suffered as complainers. And even if it's just rhetorically, it separates victims from the protections that this body has recently recognized and acknowledged belongs to victims. And on the surface, complainant may feel neutral. But the term blames the onset of criminal legal proceedings on someone who complains about a crime. A complainant is someone who begins a legal process by complaining, by filing a complaint, by being a complaining witness. When someone is the victim of a crime, something's been done to them, the crime is inflicted on them. The origin of a criminal prosecution isn't that the victim complained to the police about it. The origin is that a criminal act was perpetrated against them. The term victim properly, properly and accurately reflects this nuance. And already, some victims struggle with the decision to report to the police because they don't want to be seen as complainers and don't want to be blamed for causing police intervention. Using the term complainant, which I know is a well-intended effort to be neutral, just unfortunately feeds into the victim blaming culture that could be so difficult to combat, just like we saw the other week with the Kyle Rittenhouse case. And so to close, I want to reiterate that NVRDC and I still wholeheartedly support the RCCA and that my remarks, even where they are critical, are really only intended to refine this legislation, which I do hope that you pass. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks to this entire panel. A lot of great testimony here. I'm going to work my way through a few questions. Try to flesh out a few items here. Mr. Johnson, let me start with you. One of the, I guess, when we think about what I think one of the problems that is trying to be resolved through the RCCA is the broad sweep of our criminal laws. The logic for that kind of drafting criminal laws is that it allows law enforcement officers, the criminal justice system, to address a wide range of undesirable, bad, negative conduct. The argument is that since we can't foresee every variation of a crime or the harm that is inflicted, we need to keep some things general. And then we rely on prosecutors to determine the most adequate charge for that conduct issue. You talked about your experience, you know, from a prosecutorial standpoint. Can you talk about how you and your peers kind of navigate those issues during your time as a prosecutor? Do I see that Mr. Johnson may not be here anymore? All right, well, it was a great question, Mr. Johnson, if you're out there somewhere. I want to get back to you on that. I had a couple of questions for Mr. Johnson. We'll see if he rejoins us, and then I can come back to that. But I'll move on to a few other questions. Let's see, I'm kind of going in the order in which people testified here. So, Mr. Flowers, if you're with us, let me turn to you for a moment. First off, oh, you changed. Now you don't have the backlight, so it's good to see you. Ms. Flowers, first, I want to congratulate you. I hope folks had a chance to read the DCist article just the other day. And just congratulations on, you know, a lot of great success and professional accomplishments. And so just encourage folks to check that out if you haven't had a chance to do that. All right, you talked a good bit about your own experience, and thank you for sharing that. How, I guess, one question I ask, how do you respond perhaps to individuals who support maintaining the concept of felony murder under the theory that essentially, once you sign up to commit a crime, you're then going to be responsible for whatever happens next? That, I think that's one of the things that the RCCA is trying to get at frequently is, you know, motive, mental state, kind of all the different pieces. But anything that you can share from your own experience, from speaking to other colleagues? Would like to get your thoughts on that.
For me, not wanting to make it too specific to my situation because I was a child, and I don't think that children should be held accountable in the perspective of foreseeability of a crime as adults should be. But just in general, I think it's unfair for a person, even if they're going to commit a felony together, that if another person takes it further than an individual intended, that they should be held accountable for something that someone else does outside the original intent. So, you know, but for the people who support that type of practice, I just would say to them that I don't think that that's fair, it's equitable. And it definitely, it doesn't represent compassion because the individual could have an attention on robbing someone and be with someone and someone else, and the other person takes it further. I just don't think that it's fair that the individual be held accountable for what this other person did.
Got it, okay, that's helpful. And if you can, you know, one of the things that I think the council's going to, as we kind of hear from a lot of other voices throughout this process, you know, one of the things that we frequently will hear, but I want to see what your thoughts are here, when we think about either a sentence modification, an expansion, regardless of age, as is proposed here, the ability to petition for resentencing. You know, we've heard a lot about how the opportunity, not that it's a guarantee, just the opportunity to apply for resentencing creates incentive, creates hope, creates the ability to show rehabilitation. We also hear from folks who say anytime there's a sentence modification is going to be perceived as disrespecting the victims from that initial harm and crime that took place. Any thoughts you have around how, as policymakers, we think about that? How do we help make sure, again, we continue to respect and center victims' voices throughout a process? But recognizing that that's probably one of the things we're going to hear is a concern about what are the victims' perspectives for any sentence modification?
I think the thing that most people who we identify with as victims probably never consider that the community, the people who are directly impacted the most by crimes were never taken into consideration when these, when legislative officials came to a quantification of a certain amount of months, years, or decades that a certain offense will require an individual to serve in prison. So one thing I would like for those who advocate for victims' rights, because I do believe all human beings have a right to be protected from unjust harm. But then we also have to take into consideration that when these penalties for crimes and offenses were put together, most of the people that's in the community, we had no say-so on how much time a person does or do not do for a certain type of harm or offense or crime. So I think that it's time for the victims and offenders and those, you know, tertiary individuals on both sides come together and be more assertive in being included in the process of determining what penalties are just in relation to someone being offended by or offended.
All right, thank you, Mr. Flowers.
Thank you.
Ms. Nellis, let me turn to you if I can for a moment. Could you speak a little bit more about the link or the lack thereof between penalties and the deterrent effect of criminal law? If it's, we frequently hear, you know, it's the certainty of punishment that determines if there's a deterrent effect, not necessarily the severity of the punishment or the existence of a mandatory minimum. In what ways do you see this legislation or this proposal as a way in which it gets at that lack of link? Or what are steps or strategies you think that are either reflected within this proposal in front of us or others that we should look at that really underscore and look at the types of reforms and strategies related to deterrent effect versus the significance of a penalty? Wait till I lose Ms. Nellis, too? I'm asking questions, and people aren't here. Well, then, Mr. Howard, let's see if you're here. You want to jump in on that one?
I am here.
All right.
I can jump in on that one. I'd also like to speak about the felony murder issue you mentioned. On this issue, there's a tremendous amount of research showing that the severity of the penalty has absolutely no deterrent effect. And I think that this is a strong reason to move away from very outdated arguments that might have some common sense understanding that we would like to believe but are not borne out in reality. So I think we should move away from deterrence as any type of argument in justification of sentence length and severity of penalty. On the issue of felony murder, if I may, if that's okay to jump in there, because, and I should say, I just happen to have a copy of my book here, Unusually Cruel: Prisons, Punishment, and the Real American Exceptionalism. And I go into some depth about the issue of felony murder. You know, it's a, it's a practice that came about from the UK, of course, as much of American law did, but itself was eliminated in the UK. Eliminated in the U K nineteen fifty-eight and does not exist in any other country in the world. The U S is alone in having a felony murder rule. Other countries and particularly advanced democracies that have more modern, uh, criminal legal systems have. Practices where the severity of one's role in a particular crime corresponds proportionally to the severity of punishment. Felony murder gets rid of all of that. Felony murder. Leads to such insane situations where people with extremely minor roles. And not even knowing of the possibility that a death might occur will still get punished in the same way as the person who actually pulled the trigger. And I'm happy to also, uh, be on this panel. Colleen Flowers, uh, my friend. Someone I knew also in his last stage of incarceration and I'm in regular touch with today is an example of that, leaving aside the issue that he was just a child. Uh, sixteen and looked like he was ten, uh, when he was sentenced to life. But it was always clear that he hadn't actually committed the murder, but the law of felony murder brought him and other people who are so-called accomplices in. Uh, no other country has this. It is completely illogical, irrational. It goes against any semblance of. Justice and fairness in terms of what one's actions were. And I think we need to move away as much as possible. And I understand there are different gradations of moving away, but I think that the further we go away. I talked with, um, with judges, with prosecutors in European countries where I did my research, particularly France and Germany, U K. They don't even understand how it's possible that we would have a law of felony murder in most states in the U S. And so I think, um, it's, it's very much outdated.
Okay. Let me, um, I appreciate that. Let me, Mr. Howard, if I can, let me jump back to you just for a second. To take a couple of, another question related to the first one you answered, which is this idea again around. The certainty versus the, the penalty. So if it. Body of research and experience tells us that it is the swiftness and certainty of apprehension. It's not the severe sentences that then will create a deterrent effect. Swiftness and certainty functions though. Are they best handled within the criminal code? Or those are issues that are best handled within criminal procedure, law enforcement strategies? So as, because what, obviously what I have in front of us right now is this recommendation around a criminal code revision.
Right.
But that doesn't necessarily, uh, mean that I can actually, within this body. This, this legislative proposal deal with swiftness and certainty issues because they perhaps are addressed somewhere else. Can you kind of help talk a little bit more?
Yeah, I, I would view that as being something that's more a question of, of practice of, of policing. Of, um, how a community responds to crime as opposed to something that belongs, um, in the code. Because I think it's, it's a matter of practice. It's something that, um, can change in, in different circumstances. And when we think of a code as something that's going to hopefully be lasting. For a while, um, I don't think it's appropriate to have it be enshrined in that location.
Okay. Um, I appreciate that. Let me see if I can turn, um, Joshua Miller, I might turn to you on this one. One of the things that we, that we, we hear is some people state that they're concerned around sentencing modification. There's a fear around sentencing modification. That I think is based though in a, a genuine concern around public safety at large, um, or concerns about, uh, reoffense. What do we know about recidivism rates generally though, for both misdemeanors, felonies, serious violent crimes? And then specifically about those who have been resentenced under the existing mechanisms? So if the. It, part of what I guess I'm asking is. We should be thoughtful and be evaluating and look at recidivism and reoffense rates. But is there a distinction that exists between? Recidivism or reoffense rates in different categories versus individuals who go through a sentence modification process? You know, fifteen, twenty years after the original sentence.
Yeah, thank you, um, Chairperson Allen. I think that the, the best evidence and, and you've heard, you already have testimony on this and I'm happy to share some studies is that people age out of crime. And so overall, um, what we would think of as the, um, sort of static risk factors. That go into someone's propensity to recidivate, especially in a violent, uh, way are. It, it's, it's universally indicating that the likelihood of recidivism is going to decrease. That especially the likelihood of reoffending in a violent way is going to decrease sharply after fifteen years. So, you know. If you've committed a crime in your teens or we're really talking about people who have committed their crimes. After the age of twenty-five, you've laid, you've, you've aged out of crime. So just in the, in the sort of actuarial sense. But, um, if we were to extend that to what we know from these experiments is that we know that the recidivism rate. From the people who have received IRA and second look consideration has been extremely low. Not zero, I, we both know, but, uh, extremely low and, and very positive in this environment. And so I think that concerns about sentencing modification that are tied to public safety, tied to fears of, um, violent reoffense are mistaken. Of course, recidivism still occurs, although I would argue that a large percentage of it is tied to. Burdensome parole and supervision requirements and not actually to. You know, the, the things that people are afraid of. On top of that, the fact that, uh, post-sentencing review, a sentencing modification is always tied to. An evaluation of someone's. Change in character, the rehabilitation. I think that these are reasons for that. Sentencing modification to be taken seriously. The people who are closest to the original decision, the judges. Uh, or the judge who made that decision and the, and the offender are in a position to. Work out between themselves whether or not this person is qualified for release. Those two things. To me suggest and to, and the evidence is, is pretty clear on this. These are good bets, but I do want to say to you and to the, you know, for the record that, um, these are hazards. These are bets. They won't all work out, um, but you know, the people who are currently not incarcerated sometimes, um, recidivate as well, right? So it's possible to, um, say pretty definitively that. The risks are small, that increases public safety to give people these opportunities and that. This is, this is the right thing to do from the perspective of, of making our system more just and less cruel.
Let me, Mr. Ziegler, thank you. Uh, I might try to pull in Mr. Ziegler as well, um, as the, the leader of the Second Look Project. Kind of the same question that I just had to, to Mr. Miller, uh, would welcome your thoughts on that as well. Well, I think you might be muted, Mr. Ziegler. Sorry, we can't hear. Um, it looks like you're muted, but we can't hear you.
Is, is this any better?
There we go.
Great. Um, could we repeat the question? Sorry, I have a sick child slightly off camera and so I'm a little bit distracted.
No problem. Uh, I will, I'll do my best to, to state the question again. Um, I will probably not get it exactly right, but essentially. What I was asking is, um, when we, when we look at issues around, um, sentence reconsideration, sentence modification. We will have individuals who will say that there's a concern around, uh, will it be reoffense? Will there be, you know, recidivism with that? And so I was asking is, to some degree, what, how do we look at our? Recidivism rates generally. And that can be both misdemeanors, felonies, serious violent crimes, and then those that have been resentenced under the existing mechanisms that we have. Um, and I, uh, again, I think that I'm gonna, I'm gonna just assume. Fear around sentence modification comes from a genuine concern around public safety and, and reoffense. Um, and so what, what does the evidence tell us? What do we know from, um, how that plays out and kind of related? Should we think of it as the, we, you should be able to distinguish between reoffense, uh, or recidivism rates between. Individuals that have gone through a sentence modification, so maybe fifteen, twenty years after that original sentence. And then have a sentence modification versus individuals that just have served their sentence, um, and then returned home afterwards.
Sure. So I, I think with respect to the first question about how. Recidivism rates kind of fair with respect to. Population of people who've received sentence modifications versus people who, um. Who just served their original sentence in its entirety and are released. What we see is that generally speaking. Across the board, people who have received sentence modifications and are released as a result of those. Recidivate at much lower, lower rates than your general population of released people. And I think there's two big reasons for that. Uh, the first, as Mr. Miller noted. Was, is that by virtue of the requisite period of time that someone has to serve under this bill. Uh, I, and I realize there's noise in the background and I.
You're, you're fine. You're fine. Um, and if you need to step away, totally understand.
I, I don't know that it would change anything. Um, because of the amount of time that the bill requires someone to serve before they can seek a sentence modification. You are talking about a population of people that is. I think that are all going to be over. Thirty. Um, and I think if you're specifically talking about people who would be made eligible for sentence modifications by the proposed bill. You're talking about people that would be forty or older at the youngest, uh, at the time they receive a sentence modification. And so you're, what we know about age and the relationship between age and, you know, violence and crimes that as people get older, they are less likely to, to commit crimes. And so with people who receive sentence modifications, you're dealing with an older population generally than. Kind of defendants across the board, which makes recidivism less likely. The more important factor, I think, when you're talking about this population. Is that you're talking about a population of people who has undergone a judicial screening process to determine, you know. General questions of rehabilitation and, and character and, and fitness for reentry and an explicit question of. Whether or not they are dangerous to the community, um, which, under our current determined sent, determinant sentencing regime. There is no such review that takes place before someone's released. They hit their release date and they're gone. Regardless of how rehabilitated they may or may not be able to show themselves to be. People who receive sentence modifications, on the other hand. Receive those modifications because a judge has reviewed their, their case, usually in pretty extensive detail. And determine that this is someone who, who is safe to be released and has not, um. Has made the changes that we, we would expect to see of someone under those, those circumstances. You know, with respect to what we've seen here in, uh, you know, our experience here in the district, because I think born that out with our current sentence modification. Or sentence review mechanisms. In that. We see much lower recidivism rates than people who are just relate, released under kind of normal determinate D C code sentences. And I think this gets to Josh's point earlier as well, is that with this population as with. Generally speaking, when you talk about recidivism. Rates of recidivism are oftentimes based not simply on the type of new conduct that I think is most, that people are most concerned about, which is that someone who's. Previously committed a violent offense will be released and then they'll go out and commit another violent offense. That, that may not. Exclusively be what concerns people, but I think that's for most people, the, the most severe concern. What you see oftentimes is that, uh, recidivism, what counts as recidivism are what we call technical violations. So not that someone's actually committed a new crime or committed a new violent offense or victimized anybody, but that they have. Failed to comply with the conditions of their supervision, either because they didn't report when they were supposed to report. May have tested positive for controlled substance. Um, you may not have completed a program that they were supposed to complete. Certainly those things can be concerning to one degree or another, but I think do not. Do not present the same concern that I think a lot of people have about new violent offenses. And what, what we've seen, I think with our, our population, people who receive sentence modifications is that. Really, there's little recidivism, recidivism of any kind, be it technical violations or new law violations. Uh, you know, there have been some. New charges against, I think it's one or two people of the seventy plus that have been released and even those haven't been adjudicated. And, and resulted in a finding of guilt. And so we're. We're really just a much lower recidivism rate than what you'd see with, you know, people who are otherwise released in D C.
Got it. Okay. I appreciate that and also, uh, impressed, uh, with the. The activity going on around you. So thank you.
The dog has joined the fray now, so it's.
It's not a Zoom hearing unless there's a dog or a cat, uh, at some point. So, um. All right. I appreciate that. The, um. You know, I guess one other quick question for you, Mr. Ziegler. Some are going to say, um, that this proposal from, um. That, that's come from the, um, R C C A is that it's too, it's too soon. Since the Second Look Act has been passed and since IRA has been in place to, to be able to evaluate, uh, that. Any response you have to, to the argument that I assume we're unlikely here?
I, I mean, I, I, I understand that argument, though I don't think it's, it's founded on anything. I, I think any kind of. You know, decision about what, what would constitute too soon or, or not soon enough is. It seems kind of arbitrary. You know, what we can say is that we've, we've seen, I think now it's probably close to eighty people who've been released under. Our, our current, uh, mechanisms.
All right. Thank you.
I, I'm sorry.
You, you do what you gotta do. It's okay. You're on mute right now, but I know you got, got the, uh, the, the other responsibilities there.
Uh, but what, what I was going to say was that, um, you know, we have now. You know, we're approaching a hundred people who've been released and some of those people have been released for almost three years. And in a lot of cases, judges have seen how well people are doing on probation and actually taking them off supervision or off probation entirely. Coupled, you know, that compared with, is a very, very low documented rate of recidivism or possible recidivism. And so. You know, I, I would, I guess I would ask people what. What would satisfy them in terms of, you know, how long we need to see whether or not this, this stuff works? But, you know, it's also worth mentioning that, you know, the, the modifications and the. The reduced sentences that people are receiving under these laws are still. I mean, it's, it's instances as long or longer than what people would receive in other, um, kind of peer countries globally. Western Europe and elsewhere. And. You know. Those, those countries have not descended into chaos. Um, and in fact, this is, they've done things in a much less punitive way for, for decades. And we're just kind of catching up and, and so there's no. Any, any suggestion this is too soon to, to really know, you know, what, what's going to happen and that this might all just kind of blow up and. You know, go awry. It's not based on anything that, that I know of.
All right. Thank you. Um, Mr. Orson, let me turn to you for a moment. Um, I, I really appreciated your testimony around. Essentially, what language choices we make. Um, I hadn't heard that yet, um, as we've talked about this, so I. You got, you got some wheels turning and I appreciate that. So let me, I, I think we need to be very thoughtful about this and I'm going to wrestle with this myself about exactly, you know, what, what is the right way? To respect, um, the victim of harm that is done. From a criminal code perspective, um, because I think you raise a good point, complainant feels, uh. There, there's an awkwardness to it. There's no way around it. Um, it doesn't quite feel like if I'm, you know, if I am the victim of that crime. I don't view myself as a complaintant. You know, and I want to be empowered to be able to, to be able to talk about my experience and what my expectations are. Does, how much should I wrestle with this though? If you, if, if the word victim is used, and I'm talking about this from a code perspective. How does that interplay with the? The legal presumption of innocence until proven guilty? Oftentimes I have found, uh, as someone who is not an attorney that has come into this space, uh, the, the language and word choices within a criminal code. Are, are hard to navigate, feel oftentimes very impersonal, especially when we're talking about things that are very personal. Um, and personal harm that has been done. So it could be that it's get, it's caught in that space and that the code language itself, uh, is this neutral space that sometimes feels. Very, very much different than what you'd want, but at the same time, I think you make a really good point. Um, but I'm just kind of curious if you, I'm. But I'm just kind of curious if you, again, I'm clearly just kind of wrestling with this out loud in the moment, but how, what's your reaction to that? If, does the use of the word victim somehow fly against also, though, that there is a presumption of innocence until proven guilty?
Yeah, and I, I think you sort of hit the nail on the head. Like, that's the countervailing argument, right? That the, that the word victim just in and of itself implies some level of culpability on the person that we're talking about. But I, but I think we really need to look at is really just decoupling that, right? We want to decouple the implication that this word is insinuating a level of guilt or culpability in the trial court, in court versus how we're referring to these things in the statute, right? And I, you know, the, the statute, I, I don't think there's any problem with the statute, you know, somebody who has been the victim of a murder or the victim of a sexual assault or sexual assault victim, like I, I think it's fine and it's appropriate in, in that context. And I, I think what lawyers reading the statutes and people reading the statutes understand what we're talking about, and it doesn't necessarily need to transfer over to when we get to court. I think that if a defense attorney is able to convince a judge that using the word victim under the specific set of facts of that case implies a level of culpability that is such that it, that the defendant's right to a fair trial is, is infringed. The, the courts have plenty of discretion to tailor how the words are used in front of a jury, because that's really all that we're talking about at that point. It's, I'm not, we're not really worried about the judge, what the judges are gonna do. It's, it's the jury, like. And I, I think that the courts are more than capable of making that sort of, making that decision. But, but for me, as a victims' rights lawyer, I want to be clear that when I'm looking at the code and I'm talking to my client and I'm filing motions as a victims' rights attorney, which is not in front of a jury, I want to use the appropriate term. I want to talk to my client in the appropriate way. I want the criminal code to respect my client's role and situation. They're not, they're just not complainants. I, I certainly hear what you're saying, and I, there are potential circumstances where the, the terms matter so much, but they're just few and far between. You know, most of the time, I, I think in, in criminal cases, it's not, there's not really a question whether this person was a victim or not. It's usually a question of agency. Is this the person who victimized somebody else? And in the, in that, most scenarios, it's just not really a problem. I don't think the jury is confused or about whether somebody, you know, was or was not killed. The question is, is it this person, right? And those few instances where there's a real genuine question of fact of, was this person a victim or an aggressor? The judge is capable of sort of sorting that out and picking the right terminology to use in front of a jury based on those specific facts. But I think for the statute, it, it's safe to use victim, and I don't think we'll impugn a defendant's later fair trial rights in court.
Thank you. Another question I want to ask you is, you know, again, as someone who is, has worked with and, and worked on behalf of victims and survivors, you know, we often talk about that sometimes there is a false dichotomy that oftentimes gets, gets put out about, you know, what's a tough law, what's a lenient law? Or that oftentimes, you know, a victim and survivor are, is this static group when in fact, you know, versus an offender, when in reality, individuals that cause harm also have been victims of harm done to them as well. So I think, you know, I think most people recognize that there is a much more complexity to, to this than just a very clear cut and dry. So if part of what we want to think about those, what I hope every, I hope everyone wants to make sure that a victim and survivor has agency during a criminal justice process, and that accountability will look different to different people. And it is the, it is the accountability that is oftentimes what is sought, but how you define accountability and what means accountability might be different to different people. So you want to make sure that victim and survivor has the agency to help define that for themselves. Is that something that we, we, we look to the criminal code to define, or kind of similar that I asked, I think, Mr. Mr. Howard earlier about the, the swiftness and certainty, for example, that's necessarily in the criminal code, but that speaks to criminal justice process, that speaks to other mechanisms. What, what I have in front of me is a criminal code revision. In what way should I be looking at addressing that within the criminal code revision? You know, what, what aspects of this is going to be separate from the criminal code revision? And really, it's the other pieces of that criminal justice process that we have to continue working on.
Yeah, I, so I, again, I'm just gonna echo sort of the first part of this. The sort of fighting against that false binary of victims' rights and defendants' rights or polar opposite is like the heart and soul of the work that NVRDC has been really trying to do for so long. I mean, so much of our philosophy is rooted in the concept that victims' experience with the criminal justice process is just so heavily intertwined with their, their participation, their rights, the acknowledgement and their inclusion, and not so much with the outcomes or in the actual arguing and, and fighting of it that happens later on in court. And I, I, I could talk forever about how much I agree with that concept and that NVRDC does. You know, people are people, they're completely different, and I have represented clients who have such widely disparate views on crime and punishment and much that happened, it, it's hard to summarize. But I, I think if there's one thing that I can say and agree with is that what we really just want is to make sure that the structure, the framework and the culture is victim inclusive, whatever that means. It's gonna be different, just like, you know, I think every defendant and every fact pattern is gonna be different. People are people, defendants are people, victims are people, and they're going to have different views. And that's, it's important to make sure that victims have access to attorneys, so they have a, a vehicle to express that in court. I, I think our victims' rights also have been such a good way of come so far in giving victims or that standing to assert those interests in court. And I think that when you're looking through the code, I don't think you need to go through and necessarily tie in every statute with the victim's perspective, like on every, on every single word. But I think generally speaking, like using the word complainant is a good way to demonstrate that victims are being thought of, that they're inclusive, that we're using consistent terms. And that's really what we want. We want a framework that gives us the ability to participate. And so I think that's really what we really want to look in, in all the different ways that this changes the code. The question is, does this apparatus give victims the ability to meaningfully participate? Does it allow victims to access the rights that are already present in a way that the courts can understand, that the prosecutors can understand, the defense attorneys can understand, and that there's basic checks on that system to make sure that victims' rights don't, don't fall through the wayside? I think DC is a wonderful jurisdiction in a lot of ways that we have funding for organizations like my own and many others that represent victims in, in various ways, but most, most victims don't have legal counsel to file motions and testify about their interests. And so I would want, you know, the, the system that we're creating to create the opportunity for the courts to take charges, they're supposed to do under the statute and ensure that victims are getting the rights. And to the extent that prosecutors or defense attorneys have obligations on those laws, I would just want to make sure that the criminal code reflects that, acknowledges it, and doesn't override or somehow create a barrier to the, the application of those rights and laws that are already there.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Carter, if you're still with us, I was gonna turn to you for a second. Great, you're still there. Thank you. One, I know you ran out of time, so I want to make sure I give you a little extra time. There's some elements that you weren't able to address and you wanted to make sure that you, you got in. Please make sure, I'll give you some time to do that. But also, you know, one of the things that we, an overriding principle of this multi-year-long process is really talking about clarity, consistency, completeness. And wanted to get your thoughts if there are other overlaps, for example, between criminal code and civil law that we need to be mindful of? Besides, or in addition to the issues of intra-family sentences?
Thank you, Councilmember. Perhaps I can answer that question first and then maybe address the one other area that I wanted to get to. So I think intra-family offenses are the first that come to mind. I think that's really where you see the largest interplay between the criminal code and civil law. I think you also certainly have sort of, and I think this is something that laypeople struggle with, right? The civil definition of sort of torts, tortious actions, and where those don't necessarily match up with criminal definitions of conduct. So assaults coming from the common law as a criminal offense and as a civil offense, they may have two different definitions. So if you are injured by someone who assaults you and you pursue civil remedies in civil court, there's going to be one definition of assault that applies in that civil court versus a separate definition that might apply if you also reported that action to the police and tried to have that person prosecuted. And I think that's sometimes confusing for laypeople, but I do think that one of the benefits of the Criminal Code Reform Act and spelling out each offense in the statute is that we make extremely clear to everyone. This is the definition of the criminal offense of assault. The way that things work right now, especially, I think assault is a great example of why we need this reform, is that there is a statutory definition that says assault is a crime and anyone who commits assault will be penalized with, you know, a hundred and eighty days in jail. But there's no explanation of what assault is. And so you really, as a layperson, have to be able to navigate searching through case law to figure out what does assault mean. And obviously, as attorneys, we have the ability to do that. You know, I can sit at my computer and research what the law of assault means. But if you're an everyday citizen of the District of Columbia, you're gonna have to go to a law library and ask someone to help you figure it out. You're gonna read the law, and you may not have an understanding of the legal terms of art and what it means when you read this case law definition of assault. So I do think there's a lot of overlap between civil law and criminal law in that context, and it's kind of hard to understand why something may be a civil offense, maybe a tortious act and not a crime, or why something might be a crime, but you may not be able to seek civil remedies. I don't know if that's something that we can fix in this legislation. I think it's something that we struggle with as attorneys and people struggle with throughout the criminal justice system. But I do think that this is a step in the right direction in listing out every offense that's going to be a criminal act in the District of Columbia and explaining exactly what that criminal act is. So to the extent that we want to try to clarify that, I think this is the, the best solution that we have. In terms of the testimony that I didn't sort of get to, I think the most important thing, point that I wanted to make was on the law of stalking. I think this is something the district has struggled with since the stalking statute was first enacted, in that it's, it's very difficult to spell out what stalking is. And it's very difficult to make it make sense. And when I was drafting my comments today, I actually, I had a hard time explaining stalking in any way that would make any sense based on what the statute says. So I think that's the struggle we have, right? And that's, I think, the, the RCCA makes a pretty good attempt at trying to more clearly spell out what stalking should be, make it easier to apply. I know that our judges frequently struggle with stalking and with applying it. But I do think that there is one very important change that has been made that I think needs more thought, and I think the council should, should take it very seriously, which is that as the RCCA is written, it has eliminated one of the possible intents for stalking. Right now, and it's a complicated code, so it's sort of hard to explain if you don't use it every day. But the way it's written right now, the code says that an offender's intent when committing the acts that make up stalking are to cause an individual to fear for his or her safety or the safety of another person, to feel seriously alarmed, disturbed or frightened, or to suffer emotional distress. So you only have to prove one of those three things. The RCCA's proposed language eliminates one of those. It takes out the language that allows you to prove stalking by proving that the offender intended to make you feel seriously alarmed, disturbed or frightened. And I think that's most concerning because in my personal experience, that is the provision that judges most often use. When we, you know, we're in civil court through DCVLP's Civil Protection Order Program, we're in civil court almost every day on stalking cases. It's something that has been significantly on the rise, particularly with the rise of cyber stalking with, you know, new sort of methods of stalking proliferating almost every day, it seems. And when we are in court proving stalking cases, the judges are frequently identifying this standard as the standard that our clients have met. I think courts have a pretty difficult time figuring out whether someone intended for their conduct to cause someone to suffer significant emotional distress. And I think the Court of Appeals has sort of grappled with what does significant and emotional distress mean? I think the RCCA does a fairly good job of trying to explain what emotional distress is. But most often, our judges are citing, well, you have demonstrated conduct that I think you've proven would cause a person to reasonably feel seriously alarmed, disturbed or frightened. And that's what I'm going to use as the basis to find that you've proven stalking. And I think that it is really essential that we keep this statute flexible and keep it such that judges and juries are really the ones who are able to take all the facts and make that determination, rather than sort of limiting what we think should be the liability for stalking, because they are such fact-specific cases, and it's almost a you-know-it-when-you-see-it situation. I think that having that language in the statute is really essential and allows judges that flexibility to say, it, it's hard for me to determine whether you intended this person to fear for their safety. It's hard for me to determine whether you intended for them to feel significant emotional distress. But I do think you intended for them to feel seriously alarmed, disturbed or frightened, or you knew that they would feel alarmed, disturbed or frightened. So I think that language is really helpful to the judges. It's language that they use regularly. And I would urge the council to seriously consider whether eliminating that language might make it more difficult for victims.
Okay. All right. We'll make sure we take a good look at that. I appreciate it. I assume you probably had that in your written testimony as well?
It is in my written testimony, yes. And I'm also happy to answer any questions that you or your staff have about it.
Got it. All right. I appreciate that. We'll make sure we look at the full written testimony and then be able to follow up with you too. So thank you. Well, I want to thank this entire panel. I appreciate everybody's testimony today and the work and advocacy. So thank you all very much. What we'll do now is transition to our second public panel. But again, thanks to everyone on this first public panel. I'm gonna call out the names for our second panel. I think we have a couple of folks who are still arriving, so as they arrive, we'll just add them on to the panel and keep moving. But let me go ahead and start. I'll call out the names for panel number two. I have William Snowden, founder of The Juror Project, Galliard Hunt, public witness, Moshe Pasternak, Commissioner for ANC 2B04, Evan Douglas, Policy and Advocacy Fellow with the DC Justice Lab, Kelvin Blow, Peer Navigator, the National Reentry Network for Returning Citizens, Jeremiah Anthony, Righteous Rogers, Community Organizer with HIPS, Queen Adesuyi, Senior National Policy Manager with the Drug Policy Alliance, and Makiya Green, Co-Conductor of Harriet's Wildest Dreams. So just give us a moment as we remove everyone into the panel here. All right. I don't think I see William Snowden here yet. Check. Mr. Hunt, I see you there, and you're next on my list. So why don't I turn to you and then Commissioner Pasternak after that.
Thank you. Yes, I'm GT Hunt. I was on the CJA Appeals Panel for several years, and I appreciate the chance to speak today. I want to speak up in favor of section twenty-two A, two-one-three of the proposed code. That's a section titled Judicial Dismissal for Minimal or Unforeseen Harms. This section spells out three circumstances that authorize a judge to dismiss a case. Conduct within a customary license or toleration, cases concerning the threatening, a threatening harm or a harm that is too trivial to warrant criminal condemnation, and circumstances that could not have been possibly envisioned by the legislature. This section comes straight from the Model Penal Code. It reflects the common understanding that not every technical violation of law ought to be prosecuted or convicted. Generally, we rely on prosecutorial discretion to protect us from unnecessary prosecutions. But that's not always enough. This section merely declares that judges may throw out a case where the evidence shows it never should have been brought to court. Current DC law denies that power to judges, often with absurd results. Many states have this or similar provisions. That includes Hawaii, Maine, New Jersey, New York, and Pennsylvania. The reported cases from those states show that the law has been useful in the rare cases where judges have used it. The law would be especially useful in the District of Columbia, where different levels of policing for different folks often mean that a trivial violation in Chevy Chase goes unnoticed, while the same technical offense in Anacostia leads to someone carrying a criminal conviction through the rest of his life. The late Judge Schwelb, of happy memory, in the case of Watson versus United States, nine ninety-seven Atlantic, second one-one-five-four, left us with an eloquent plea to adopt this provision. I can do no better than to endorse Judge Schwelb's view. Twenty-two A, two-one-three of the proposed code should be adopted, even if nothing else is. Thank you. And if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hunt. Next, let me turn to Commissioner. Uh, next, let me turn to Commissioner Pasternak. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. And you got my first name right, which is often the harder one. Uh, good morning, everybody. My name is Moshe Pasternak, and I currently serve as the ANC Commissioner for 2B04 in Dupont Circle, also known as the Friendly Square. I'm fully in support of the Revised Criminal Code Reform Act of 2021 and hope you enact the recommendations of the Criminal Code Reform Commission. As a member of a unique branch of government, I want to note how the development of the Revised Criminal Code represents a paragon of good government and legislating. Independent experts have developed an updated version of DC's Criminal Code through an extensive process that brought in a broad range of stakeholders. I hope that the council recognizes this effort and supports the act as currently drafted. ANC commissioners are often described as a bridge between residents and the government, and the clarity and specific definitions that the RCC proposes would make DC's Criminal Code more approachable and easily understood by non-lawyers. Honing definitions will also hopefully help prevent future incidents like the Kettleling that occurred on Swan Street in the summer of 2020, a few blocks from my district. The substance of the RCC would make DC a fair jurisdiction and advance racial justice. I support the RCCA because, as our nation's capital, we should have a criminal code that reflects best practices, relevant social science research, and data analysis. And while I'm speaking as an individual commissioner, I want to draw your attention to a resolution passed by ANC 2B and ME. In part, the resolution reads, whereas ANC 2B reaffirms that Black Lives Matter and is committed to doing everything in our power to make them truly matter in our ANC jurisdiction and in our city. ANC 2B is the home of Black Lives Matter platform, but passing the RCCA would be a far more meaningful statement in recognition that Black Lives Matter. Other witnesses may be better equipped to discuss specifics on how our current system harms our black neighbors, but I hope you recognize this opportunity to right historical wrongs. Another key change is the proposal to allow for sentences to be reviewed after 15 years. I support this provision because it keeps the focus on community and the people who comprise it. This would be a way to allow for safe reintegration of people into our community. We should not be so vindictive as to lock up our neighbors and throw the key away. Lastly, I support the provision that removes panhandling as a crime. This is, again, consistent with a previously passed ANC resolution, and I hope it earns your support. The Criminal Code Reform Commission analysis suggests that parts of this prohibition may be unconstitutional, but even to this non-lawyer, they appear unclear and do not reflect the values I wish to see expressed by our laws. Currently, the law could be interpreted to classify as asking for money a second time after a dismissive head shake as illegal panhandling and subject to imprisonment. This classification prioritizes the comfort of more fortunate residents and does little to promote public safety. Indeed, CCRC conducted a survey that found that DC residents share the perspective that while panhandling may be unpleasant, it is not a serious crime. Additionally, any solicitation at a bus stop or metro station is a crime. This is absurd when other actions that are more disruptive to other riders, such as spitting, are merely civil infractions. The Criminal Code Reform Commission's analysis found that a large proportion of the enforcement of the panhandling statutes in recent years are being conducted by Metro Transit Police, which is less accountable to the council than MPD. The current panhandling regime is the type of law that creates an atmosphere where tents belonging to unhoused neighbors are stolen by vigilantes, as occurred last summer on 17th Street, and the eviction that's happening, that's New Jersey and O as we speak. We should be working towards helping people experiencing homelessness rather than criminalizing poverty. The RCCA doesn't provide housing, but it does reinforce the notion that housing, not criminalization, remains the solution to homelessness. I hope you pass the RCCA, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Uh, next, let me turn to Evan Douglas. Good afternoon. No, not afternoon yet. Good morning, Mr. Douglas.
Good morning, Councilmember Allen. How are you doing today?
Doing great. Good to see you again.
Good to see you too. Um, well, thank you again, Councilmember Allen and the committee for allowing me to speak today and share my perspective. Um, my name is Evan Douglas, and I'm a born and raised Washingtonian, and I am currently the Policy and Advocacy Fellow at the DC Justice Lab. I grew up in Ward Four and currently live in Ward Five. I graduated from School by Walls. I'm a recent graduate of GW with my master's in criminology. More importantly, uh, I also served as a police officer with MPD from 2016 to 2021 in the 7th District. I want to share a brief story with you that can truly illustrate the importance of simplifying and modernizing our current DC Criminal Code by adopting the new Revised Criminal Code of 2021. I remember like it was yesterday, back when I was in patrol. One morning, I was assisting with Safe Passage as children were coming into Henley Elementary School when I received a radio run for aggravated assault in progress. I immediately responded to the scene where three young ladies were involved in an altercation. After everyone was separated, it was two sisters fighting the other young lady. The two sisters said the other young lady came to the house trying to fight, and she had a knife in her hand. I was able to find the closed pocket knife on the ground and asked the young lady about it. She said she had it in her hand, but was not using it. She possessed the knife and carried the knife during an assault, but she didn't brainish it, and she didn't touch anyone with it. I called for a detective and a sergeant to respond to the scene. When it came to the scene, I gave them all the facts, and I told them that it should be a simple assault, and it was clear cut, as I thought. My sergeant said it should be a assault with a dangerous weapon, and the detective said it should be aggravated assault. We all were in disagreement, so we went to Google to find out what the DC Criminal Code said. The current DC Criminal Code 22402 Assault with the intent to commit mayhem or dangerous weapon states, "Every person convicted of an assault with the intent to commit mayhem or of an assault with a dangerous weapon shall be sentenced to imprisonment for not more than 10 years." That's it. That's all it said. It didn't define what an assault was. It didn't define what mayhem was, or it didn't define what assault with a dangerous weapon was. Nothing to help us make a decision that could potentially change this young lady's life forever. So we went back to Google, and we had to find a, an attorney's red book and find the pattern jury instructions to find the elements they'd use in prosecution. Unfortunately, the young lady ended up getting arrested for ADW knife, and the case was swiftly dismissed at the arraignment. But just think what damage has already been done, how this young lady's life has been hindered and changed just because a felony charge was dismissed off her record already. Just imagine how many people's lives have been changed because they have been charged with felony or simply just arrested because the criminal code was unclear. We need our statute language to be clear, simple, well-defined, and concise, so lives are not potentially ruined by law enforcement. We need to streamline our criminal code so a person's life isn't haphazardly altered by an officer's discretion. If the criminal code was clear, there will be no discrepancies in opinions. Creating a more equitable city begins here. The Revised Criminal Code of 2021 will right the wrongs that have consistently targeted communities of color. Thank you for the time, and I'll be gone for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Definitely I'll make sure I come back with some questions here. Uh, and I should, I guess, say for, for all of our panelists, uh, please stay uh, so that we can ask some questions after the testimony. Um, I believe I got a note that, um, William Snowden is here. I called Williamson earlier, but I think Williamson is here now, so let me jump back and see if Mr. Snowden, if you're here and want to go and give your testimony now.
Yes. Hello, everyone, and good morning. Thank you so much for having me. My name's Will Snowden. Um, I work with The Juror Project. I consider myself a jury duty nerd, and I'm very excited to talk to you all about the provision in the code, expanding the right to a jury specifically as it relates to misdemeanor offenses. We think about the principle, one of the principal things this country was founded upon is the sanctity of our individual liberty. And when we think about our criminal legal system, whenever it is positioned for that liberty to be taken away, I believe and it's been demonstrated that a jury should be part of that conversation to decide whether or not a person is potentially convicted of a crime, and when that conviction can result in somebody being, uh, sent to prison and serving, uh, time incarcerated. So as we think about why it's important to apply the jury right even to misdemeanor offenses, there are misdemeanor offenses that include people's liberty being taken away. But there's two additional things that I wanted to lift up. The right to a jury can give confidence and faith for an accused person to exercise that right when they've been accused of a particular crime. The second thing I want to lift up is it also provides space for the community to understand that the voice of the community is actually represented in the jury deliberation room. We've seen some high-profile cases this year with a lot of focus on the individual jury deciding some of the outcomes of those cases. And when we think about how we want to improve our criminal legal system, we certainly can be considerate of the functions and policies that we are including within the courtroom, but when we invite community into that courtroom, we want to understand that they feel they have a voice, that they have power, and they also are contributing to the overall checks and balances of our criminal legal system. So as you think about expanding this right to misdemeanors, I know some concerns that could be had is that it's going to increase more case processing time, or it's going to add more work to the courts. Well, our criminal legal system has never been designed to be afraid of additional work. But I also want to contextualize for the cases that, um, are felony offenses that are, are resolved via trial or jury trial, that is not a high volume of the cases that are coming through the court. Uh, I think around 94% of the cases in the last few years have been resolved via a plea deal. I would not be surprised that the misdemeanor cases that would have the right to a jury would similarly have a low actual trial rate. It probably would mimic the felony trial rate of 5% to 6%. So we're not talking about a huge increase in the work that would be added to the overall court system, and so I want to provide that context and big picture of the things that can be achieved by adding this jury right for misdemeanor, um, charges. One, it gives accused people the additional right to have access to folks in the community being part of the process of deciding what accountability can look like in our criminal legal system. Second, it can provide additional space for the community to have in the criminal legal system, knowing that their voices can be represented in the actual deliberation boxes. They're hearing testimony and evidence presented by the government. And third, it is not something that is going to actually increase, uh, a ton, add a ton of different work to our criminal legal system, providing a reason for, um, some people having concern that adding this misdemeanor jury trial right is going to add too much work to our criminal legal system, which I know it is well than positioned, uh, to be able to handle those additional cases. Thank you for having me.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mr. Snowden. Um, all right, let's see if I can jump back in line now. And, uh, Mr. Snowden, if you can hang out, because we're going to come back with, uh, questions after we get through the, everyone testifying this panel. Um, let me turn to Mr. Blow. Good morning.
Morning, Councilmember Allen. How are you?
Doing well. Good to see you again.
You as well. Um, firstly, good morning to everyone in attendance. Uh, firstly, I want to thank you, Councilmember Charles Allen, and all parties in attendance for yet another opportunity to speak today and be heard. Uh, my name is Kelvin Blow. I'm a Washingtonian, a returning citizen, a United States Marine Corps veteran, the Peer Navigator Coordinator with the National Reentry Network for Returning Citizens, and Policy and Advocacy Associate with DC Justice Lab. I speak today regarding the Revised Criminal Code Act of 2021. The current criminal code, in my experience, has been extremely difficult to understand during my 66-month stint of incarceration. And throughout my entire life, there has been a plethora of examples of this. I've encountered individuals whose prior facts were essentially identical, but somehow were charged differently. This is due to the fact that the current criminal code leaves too much discretion to the criminal justice practitioners, and this discretion is often influenced by some bias. Have you heard, as you've heard in testimonies before mine, and will probably hear later testimonies, the current criminal code is in despair. It is extremely difficult to interpret, and there are plenty of details missing, which leaves a lot to individual discretion or individual interpretation. But I do not wish to focus on the current code. I want to bring attention to the Revised Criminal Code of 2021. Firstly, I'd like for all listening parties to keep in mind how extremely intricate this bill is. One of the biggest and most important inclusions in this revised criminal code is the general definitions which affect liability across the board. Also, due to the intricacy of the bill, we want to caution people away from making one-on-one comparison of its, its offenses. For example, on the last panel, DC Volunteer Lawyers Project expressed concern about a particular domestic violence fact pattern being decriminalized. In fact, that same conduct is still punished under the revised criminal code, but it appears under criminal threats instead of assault. The same can be used and can happen when looking for armed carjacking or assault with the intent to kill. Liability still exists for that conduct, but it looks different than it does under current law. Similarly, the language that witnesses urge the council to retain in the stalking statute would likely render it unconstitutional. This is explained at length in the commentary accompanying the bill. The Criminal Code Reform Commission was tasked with ensuring our statutes are statute that criminalized, are constitutionally sound. The council sometimes passes laws that are unconstitutional, such as the statute that criminalized the mere presence and the motive vehicle pertaining to the firearm. Everyone expected that law would be struck down on its first appeal, but understand what it means to wait for the court to do that. While everyone is waiting for the Court of Appeals to strike it down, a lot of people are arrested, prosecuted, and harmed. Imagine being arrested, taken away from your family, your job, your entire life, and being subject to the harsh conditions of incarceration for several months, several years even, while you wait for courts to decide whether your arrest was even constitutional in the first place, or if your act or absence of action is even a crime. For victims of crime, having unconstitutional laws in the books can mean that otherwise valid convictions are subject to challenges resulting in the reversal of a conviction or a new trial. This process is just backwards and harmful in more ways than one. The confines and elements of any crime should be lawful and easily interpreted by all parties, from the arrested officer to the defendant, to the judge, and all parties in between. The Revised Criminal Code of 2021 does just this. Uh, thank you again for the opportunity to speak, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blow. Uh, let's see. Next, I have Jeremiah Anthony, Righteous Rogers. Are you there?
Sorry. Hi. Hello, everyone. Good to see you as well. Um, again, thank you, uh, Chairman Allen, all other present council members, all other presenters. I am glad to be here. My name is Jeremiah Anthony, Righteous Rogers. Um, I use they/them pronouns for your linguistic ease, um, and I am the community organizer at, um, HIPS. Um, so I'm excited to, as a representative of HIPS, to testify today and subsequently submit, uh, written testimony about the Revised Criminal Code Act of 2021. Um, this submission will also have commentary that I have made or will be making today. Um, and, um, again, I'll also be here for questions. Just want to get that out the way as well, right? Um, and so while we, um, HIPS, uh, is thankful and appreciative again of this code, um, and this act, right, to revise the criminal code, we would also say that, um, we, in partnership with, uh, DPA as well, um, seek to take, um, to take it a step further, right? Because while we understand that, um, you know, the revision of the criminal code is, is necessary, um, and the fact that there's so much support to revise the criminal code, uh, we also want to be specific about, um, going even further and making sure that we are considering both the public health and racial justice impacts of continuing to criminalize drug possession, um, of person-use quantities, particularly when overdose rates in the district have been at an all-time high. So again, as a representative of HIPS, as a community organizer, I, um, strongly urging the council and the committee to, um, expeditiously consider removing criminal penalties for personal, uh, use drug possession and follow the directives that we, um, have, uh, brought forth in the Decrime Poverty DC Coalition and Campaign, um, to provide evidence-based public health infrastructure to support the health and well-being of those who use drugs or people, rather than who use drugs, uh, in the district. Um, it is important that we, uh, are aware and acknowledge, um, that we are in, um, a crisis in the district, right? Where, um, overdose rates have increased. Um, I was, um, looking at, um, something that said, give me one second, I'm sorry. That spoke about how we also have to consider, um, the drug supply, right? A lot of times, um, when we talk about, um, you know, the overdose rates, it's the pandemic, you know, and that has been very toxic on people, but it's not just the pandemic, right? That we also want to acknowledge that, uh, there have been cases of a new class of old That we also want to acknowledge that there have been cases of a new class of opioids, which are fifty to a hundred times more potent than morphine, several times more potent than fentanyl. And the reality is that criminalizing people who use drugs, especially when even the drugs themselves are not necessarily safe, is further marginalizing and harming people. We want to take an approach that is far more centered on public health, far more centered on rehabilitation as opposed to criminalization. It is also important to note that eighty-three percent, or which is about four to five DC voters, which also, this is in our polling data, four to five, out of four, sorry, four out of five DC voters support removing criminal penalties for drug possession and increasing funding for health services, again, health-based approaches. And ninety-three percent of DC voters also support establishing twenty-four-seven harm reduction centers and overdose prevention services for those who use drugs. And again, the way that I'm coming or the lens in which I come at it from, again, HIPS provides services to many people who are drug users, sex workers as well, sex workers who also use drugs, and people again who use drugs, right? And so making sure that we are able to fulfill our duties organizationally to make sure that we are keeping our community safe, to make sure that we keep our clients safe, is critical for the work that we are doing and for the lives of these people that we serve. Again, just not focusing so much on criminalization, but again, making sure that we are prioritizing decriminalization, prioritizing public health in our efforts. And so again, while we are thankful for, again, this strong, strong effort to to revise the criminal code, we are also asking that you would consider to, you know, partner with us in pushing forward the decriminalization of drugs through the hashtag Decrim Poverty DC Campaign, because we do not want to see more lives lost. We don't want to see more clients, you know, suffering. And that we also just want to say for district. We have over almost fifty coalition partners who are also in this work, so not just, you know, looking at the polling data, but also again, those who are also working closely with us. Again, thank you so much, and I'm here for questions.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, please, we're going to let everybody have a chance to testify on this panel, and I'll come back around with questions in just a moment. So next, let me turn to Queen Adesey, Senior National Policy Manager with the Drug Policy Alliance.
Good morning, Chairman Allen, all present staff. My name is Queen Adesey, and I'm with the Drug Policy Alliance. DPA appreciates the opportunity to testify today on the RCCA. There are many aspects of the revision that we support, particularly elimination of all mandatory minimum sentences, creating a sentence, a sentence review procedure to address unnecessarily harsh sentences, and providing a right to jury trial for all misdemeanors. We also support several specific changes in code sections addressing drug offenses, and will provide more detailed feedback on those sections, along with several relatively modest recommendations for improvements in our written testimony. However, I will spend my oral testimony discussing a fundamental shortcoming of the revision, which is that it stops short of recommending one of the most important and necessary revisions to the code, which is ending the criminalization of personal use drug possession. This effort does not go nearly far enough in considering both the public health and racial justice impacts of continuing to criminalize drug possession for personal use, particularly when overdose rates in the district have reached all-time highs. We strongly urge this committee and the full council to swiftly consider eliminating criminal penalties for personal use drug possession and follow the directive of the Decrim Poverty DC Coalition in our calls to establish an evidence-based public health infrastructure to support the health and well-being of people who use drugs in the district. To put it plainly, we are in a serious state of emergency. Overdose has wreaked havoc on our communities for years now, but it's abundantly clear that the COVID- nineteen emergency, along with the continued harms of arresting and incarcerating people simply because they use or in possession of drugs, has further compounded this crisis, resulting in the most deaths we have ever seen due to overdose in the district's history. In two thousand twenty alone, it's estimated that we have lost over five hundred Washingtonians to accidental overdose. I want to remind everyone that each of those deaths were preventable. I also want to remind everyone of the role that our failure to treat drug use as a public health issue rather than a criminal one has played in the amount of people we continue to lose to accidental overdose. We applaud you, Chairman Allen, and the full council for unanimously voting to decriminalize harm reduction tools previously criminalized under antiquated drug paraphernalia laws last year. Decriminalizing drug use equipment was an extremely important step forward in allowing for community-based organizations and harm reduction providers, SIFHIPS, to expand their services again, especially in the wake of COVID- nineteen. However, we must go further. Two thousand twenty-one marks fifty years since President Nixon declared the war on drugs right here in the district. We have fifty years of data and lived experiences that demonstrate that the status quo of addressing drug use and misuse through criminalization is not working. In fact, it is the status quo that continues to pose public health and racial justice consequences, disproportionately impacting the most vulnerable in the district. We cannot in good conscience continue to say that we understand that drug use and drug misuse are public health and even behavioral health issues while continuing, continuing to punish and incarcerate people simply for possessing personal use quantities of drugs. Drug criminalization in of itself is negatively impacting individual and community health. It is time that we shift our approach and center harm reduction and the goal of saving lives. The Decrim Poverty DC Coalition, co-led by DPA and HIPS, along with our nearly fifty public health, faith, justice reform, and civil rights groups, all strongly urge not to allow the RCCA to be the only bite at the apple when it comes to justice reform this session. We desperately need to see the Decrim Poverty DC bill introduced and advanced in order to right the wrongs of the drug war, but also to get ahead of what could be a devastating escalation of the overdose crisis, given the new class of synthetic opioids discovered in DC's street drug supply last week. It is estimated this new class of opioids is several times more potent than fentanyl. We cannot arrest our way out of the clear, of this clear public health and failed public policy problem. Though the RCCA can easily be updated to include the elimination of criminal penalties for person use drug possession as written, our preference is to see DC council commit to moving Decrim Poverty DC's full proposal alongside the RCCA. Our goal is not simply to decriminalize drugs. We want and need a true investment in beefing up our harm reduction safety net and public health infrastructure to address the needs of the minority of drug users who struggle with problematic use. Our legislative proposal includes establishing a commission on substance use health and safety to help determine what person use thresholds should be for each substance, along with several provisions that help reduce reincarceration, address collateral consequences of convictions, and several provisions that will strengthen the harm reduction safety net, including expanding drug checking services and establishing twenty-four-seven centers that provide harm reduction health and overdose prevention services. These are common sense policies. They hold significant support amongst DC voters. As Jeremiah Anthony mentioned, DPA commissioned a long local poll only a couple of months ago that shows that four out of five voters, including the majority of voters across all major demographics, support removing criminal penalties for possession of small amounts of drugs and investing in health services. That's eighty-three percent of voters. The survey evaluated several elements of our proposal and found that each component of the proposal holds widespread support. In fact, increasing funding for services and twenty-four-seven harm reduction centers were almost universally favored by all voters, with ninety-five percent and ninety-three percent support respectively. Thank you again for this opportunity to testify. DPA appreciates this massive effort and historic effort to rewrite our criminal code and put forth better and sound policy. DPA, along with our nearly fifty coalition partners, strongly urge you to immediately consider introducing and advancing the Decrim Poverty DC Bill proposal as the RCCA moves in order to directly address the devastating public health emergency that overdose and drug criminalization continues to pose on the district's more vulnerable populations. I'm ready for questions whenever we have them. Thanks.
Thanks. We'll return to questions in just a little bit. Thank you very much. And our last member of this public panel, Makia Green, co-conductor for Harriet's Wild as Dreams. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Councilmember Charles Allen, and everyone who has shared a wonderful testimony ahead of me. My name is Makia Green. I am a co-conductor for Harriet's Wild as Dreams and also an organizing director for the Working Families Party, and I use they/them pronouns. As an organizer who mobilizes in Washington DC with the Black community at the forefront of my work, I prioritize political education, transformative legislative integrity, and community empowerment. And this focus paired with my belief on the creation of an equitable and just city without police and prisons makes me a supporter of the Revised Criminal Code Act of two thousand twenty-one. And I'm testifying today in hopes of passing this legislation, making it stronger, and hoping to spark transformative justice for DC's legal system. So you've heard from many experts about the nitty-gritty parts of this bill. One of the things that really impacted us and why Harriet's Water Streams is supportive of this is that we know that this revision is not going to, is not a holy grail. I know that it can be really easy to call it racial justice, but at the end of the day, DC's criminal code has not been updated, had a serious overhaul since nineteen oh one. This is actually just good policy. This is the bare minimum of what DC needs to be doing when it comes to racial justice, when it comes to respecting and supporting survivors of police violence, survivors of drug addiction, survivors of being marginalized in DC. So currently, as the code stands, there are severe unjust laws, and a good portion of them relate to a time, like I said, in nineteen oh one, which is similar to things like black codes, right? Which is the most racist legislator to ever exist in American law. Outside of it just being outdated, there's been also a lot of extreme and unnecessary consequences. For example, right now, you can get an assault on a police officer for things like opposing, impeding, intimidating. Their prosecutors in DC have even legislated up to give someone a APO for literally bracing themselves on a steering wheel when an officer is pulling them over. There are too many gaps in the criminal code right now. The vagueness is where racism and injustice is allowed to grow. In my experience, when advocating for survivors of police brutality, this is usually when you, you find that DC jail fills up with victims of police brutality. How many times have we come and testified that there was someone who was brutalized by police? And instead of us hearing their story, they have trumped up charges, they have APOs, they have anything that a prosecutor can throw at them, anything that a officer will try and write up. And so this is, is why Harriet's Water Streams is really focused on this. Some other stories that we've had, and we work with public defenders, you have folks who are getting charged with robbery and threatened for fifteen years in jail because they didn't pay for their Papa John's that ended up being leaked. You have people getting charged with getting an arrest warrant because they ate a piece of stolen pizza. You have people having their entire lives upended because of the neglect, the vagueness, and injustice in the criminal code. And we also support this because we're supporting ending mandatory minimums. We're supporting the right to jury. We're supporting decriminalizing things such as, you know, playing games in the street, panhandling, possession of a self-defense spray. And so we know that this can play a major role in abolition that we believe in, ending the school-to-jailhouse prison pipeline. And we believe in rehabilitation for juveniles and believe that there should be no incarceration for children under the age of eleven. There shouldn't be incarceration for children, period. But we really support what the RCCA is doing right now. I also want to add that we do support decrim poverty. We believe that this needs to be expanded to get rid of all criminal penalties for drugs use and possession. Okay, and I know I'm almost there. Okay. And so we support decrim poverty. We support the RCCA. It is, we hope that you will move it even further and that we will pass this and that you will not come to us next year saying we already did racial justice, because this is just good policy and what all people in DC need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right. Thanks to everybody on this panel. I've got a lot of questions for this panel as well. I'm just going to try to work my way kind of through the order a little bit. But thank you, everybody. So let me turn, William Stone, I'm going to start with you. Part of what, you know, as we, I appreciate yourself, self-described term of a, I think you said it was a juror nerd.
Jury duty nerd.
Yeah. Jury duty nerds. I appreciate that. All right. So putting that hat on. So you talked about, you practice in the jurisdiction of Louisiana, where jury trial, jury, jury trial rights are a bit of a national outlier. Under the district's current criminal code, it's our current code, many misdemeanors do not have the right to a jury trial. RCCA would greatly expand jury trial rights so that all misdemeanors with a jail sentence become jury mandable. You discussed some of the potential benefits of expanding jury trial rights, that jurors represent, you know, a broader range, more represent backgrounds than judges necessarily. And unlike judges, they're not going to have heard from the same officer testifying, you know, over and over again. How, from your perspective, how would a trial right for misdemeanor offenses affect people's decisions during the plea bargain process that we see play out with the USAO and others?
Certainly. When people have access to a jury, I think their calculus of deciding whether or not to go to trial or to take a plea deal is a little bit different. There's this, for some, there's a faith in the community being able to show up in the deliberation box or in the jury box and actually be the ones to decide whether or not the accused's conduct is something that the community wants to criminalize. So if we were to have the jury right for misdemeanor offenses that include jail time, I think it would actually increase people's desire to go to trial as opposed to taking a plea deal.
Got it. Okay. Um, has the Juror Project been able to, to look at, for example, the district, whether juries are representative of the district population? And if not, what are some, you know, in your experience, what are some of the barriers that exist to creating more representative juries overall?
So I'm not familiar with the data as it relates to the district's jury demographics, but I can highlight more globally or nationally some of the barriers that we're seeing as it relates to removing diversity from our jury panels, and there's four main things. The first thing that frequently removes people from, removes diversity from our jury panel are the lists that are utilized to summon jurors. So some jurisdictions only use voter registration and DMV records, but when they do that, they are de facto excluding people who otherwise would be eligible to serve on a jury. But since they aren't registered to vote, or since they don't own a car, they aren't getting summoned. So the first thing we like to lift up is the list that are being used to summon jurors is sometimes contributing to the lack of diversity. The second contributing factor is the voir dire process, so the jury selection process. The types of questions that assistant district attorneys or AUS attorneys, excuse me, AUSAs and defense attorneys are asking are sometimes designed to strategically remove Black people, indigenous people, people of color from the jury. And that is part of the things that's contributing to the lack of diversity, is simply the voir dire process and the types of questions that are being asked during jury selection. The third contributing factor is the felony disenfranchisement, so in jurisdictions where people with felony convictions are unable to serve on a jury, that's preventing a certain population of people to even have the right to be in the jury box in the first place. And then the fourth contributing factor that we like to lift up is simply community perception. There are probably people on this call who have either known of someone or perhaps even ourselves. When we receive the jury summons in the mail, we try to figure out if there's a lawyer or a judge or somebody that works in the system that we know to say, hey, I just got a jury summons. Can I get out, how do I get out of this? And so the community perspective is also something that we're working on to get folks to understand that a tremendous amount of power that exists in that jury box, and it is not something that we should be discarding lightly.
Okay. So I'm, I'm gonna throw a fifth in there if I can. I'd love your thoughts on this. Isn't one of our significant challenges also, though, just for working people? That a jury summons, if I get a jury summons, I'm going to be able to rearrange my schedule. I'm going to be able to reschedule that meeting. I got childcare covered, and I'm going to be able to go. And they're going to give me, you know, a couple of dollars for my time. I don't need it. I'm good. But the reality is, for working people, working families, the ability to get that time off while technically may be protected, is just going to have a different relationship with their employer, is not going to necessarily have childcare, like, shouldn't that be on that list? Like, isn't that, that's obviously not going to be fixed in the criminal code, but just from a, from a jury perspective, isn't that a pretty significant barrier as well to make sure that representation is really well taken care of?
You're absolutely right, and we should be adding that to the list. When we think about how serving on a jury is easier for some folks and a little bit more burdensome for others, the issue that you're highlighting is spot on. We know some employers do not provide leave time for an individual to go serve on a jury. And as you mentioned, for folks who might have a salary job or have a kind of an understanding employer that wants to support somebody participating in that civic duty, that wouldn't be an issue. But for the person who potentially works an hourly job, or they have two jobs, or they, you know, are a single parent, and they have to be mindful of the responsibilities of childcare, those are additional things that make it more difficult Those are additional things that make it more difficult for people with hourly jobs, uh, need to provide childcare. People who have those additional responsibilities, it certainly makes it more difficult for them to participate.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I, I, I'm with you on that. I think that, um, that I, I know we've seen other jurisdictions, uh, have looked at at how to tackle that. Obviously, the district is a bit unique in terms of the ways in which our juries, um. You know, go through federal courts rather than a, than a local control where other state jurisdictions have, have much more control over that. But, um, yeah, well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Uh, let me turn to Hunt for a second. Um, so the, the RCCA would grant judges the authority to dismiss a prosecution that involves minimal or unforeseen harms, such as cases where the offense, uh, quote, did not actually cause or threaten the harm or evil sought to be prevented by the law, or did so only to an extent, uh, too trivial to warrant the condemnation of conviction, quote. From your perspective, do, do district judges currently have the explicit or the implied authority to dismiss cases that involve minimal or unforeseen harms? And are there any kind of real life examples that you might be able to share about why that would be important?
Uh, every criminal defense lawyer has a whole file full of real life examples. Um, one of my favorite is, uh, a woman of about twenty years old who discovered that her kid brother twelve or fourteen or about that age had taken the grocery money. So she ran out of the front door hollering, I'm gonna kill you, you little blankety blank. And now, if this had happened in Chevy Chase, no one would have noticed, but it happened east of the park or Anacostia, I forget where, and if there were police in the neighborhood. And she was duly arrested and charged and, uh, uh, to, to get, to get to your very important theoretical question, uh, I think an awful lot of judges on Superior Court do carry out this duty i- under the guise of not finding proof beyond a reasonable doubt. But the, the, the appellate court law is clear, the, the doctrine in the district is that the judge has no authority to do that. If, if the elements of the crime are proven, the, the judge is must just mechanically enter the, uh, the conviction. Uh, very often then they will go very light on the sentencing, but still the, the record of the conviction is there. Um, other states have recognized this problem and have made it clear that, uh, uh, a judge can throw a case out just because it was, it was, uh, too trivial to have been brought in the first place.
Okay. Doesn't, I mean, all right, so if there are examples though of where the courts, the judge can dismiss that case. It obviously means that it came, it, it got all the way to the point that it was before them, right? Um. What would be your response to say, well, let's, why don't we just rely on, um, prosecutors not to bring those cases forward? Um, like, why, why should we look at the criminal code as a place to make changes rather than just kind of relying on prosecution not to bring those cases that have that minimal or unforeseen?
Well, that, actually, we do rely on them largely and, and, uh, to some extent that works. Um. It, it, the, the point of having it in the criminal code is, uh, the, when the prosecutor, uh, does a clear miscall and after the facts are shown out in court, uh, it was clear that that was a wrong judgment, that the the judge is not powerless to correct that.
Right.
It, it, in the states that have adopted it, it has not become a, uh, anything that's used routinely, but, uh, uh, there's a lot of reported cases that show that, uh, uh, that it's, it's, it's useful to have it in there. Uh, most importantly, it, it's, it's just wrong in DC not to, 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 to have the rulings of the Court of Appeals that make it clear that, that that is not in theory allowable under the law. We just need to abrogate that. And the provision of the model code is ideal to do that.
Yeah. Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Appreciate that. Um, Commissioner Pasternak, let me turn to you for a second. Um. None of these is overly theoretical. I mean, one of the most important aspects, um, of this code reform project that we've been going through now for many years is that it's an opportunity for district residents to self-determine our own criminal code, uh, the one that was written in nineteen oh one. Um, you know, I'm grateful for everybody who's participated in our hearings on the bill so far, all the hard work that's gone into even getting it to the place where it's been put before the council. We've got national and local subject matter experts weighing in, advocacy groups, practitioners. Um, but I want to make sure that district residents obviously have a voice in this process. You are an elected official. Um, what, what do you think your constituents would prioritize as the council reviews the CCRC that's before us? Um, and what I mean by that is again, not the, not the practitioners that are in the space, um, you know, that again, their input is incredibly valuable. But, you know, this is a bit of, um, self-determination here. Um, what do you, what do you think are some of the ways that, um, that your constituents would prioritize? Um, how we look at this, what steps we take. Um, and also it's probably fair to say, like, you know, there's been a lot of communication around this. But what are some of the ways that, uh, that communication to constituents needs to continue happening?
Thank you for the, the question, council member. I think an overarching theme that people want to, to see reflected in our law is fairness. Um, and that's not just something that I think is, is reflected in criminal law, but, but in zoning and, and liquor licenses and things that ANC's are, are more uh, more usually dealing with. People want to feel that, that it's fair and the process makes sense. Uh, so I think reforming our criminal code should, and you know, when you look at other, other elements of law as well, uh, fairness is, is a key one. Another, another element that I think, uh, folks like is, is, uh, self-determination, as you mentioned, uh, which also means local control. Uh, so, so making sure that this, this revised criminal code is something where majority of decisions are being made by, uh, DC attorneys rather than, uh, the US Attorney General's Office, uh, is, is one that will be appreciated and is, and is one that can be uh, described as, as a selling point of this reform, uh, is that this is retaking, uh, some, some federal control. That is sort of the unique element of, of living in DC. Um, I think that kind of addresses the, the like broader themes. Uh, and then in, in terms of how to, to talk about it, I, I think, you know, say how those themes are reflected, say how the, uh, the subject matter experts have been heard. I don't think, uh, even, even in a town like DC, people, people recognize that there are subject matter experts. Uh, so I think it's important to, to hear those voices and to hear the voice of activists, uh, like we're, we're doing today. So I, I thank you for, for making the space for that.
Okay, thanks. Um, or do you have any ideas about how, um, the committee, the council, CCRC can help you and other ANC commissioners, uh, be able to share this proposal, uh, be able to help get information out?
Yeah, I, I think if, if people, you know, are, are interested in their tuning in today, this is not a, a super high-profile uh, process. I think part of that is because it is so long and so dense. Um, and, and one of the things that I would recommend either the council or, or CCRC do is to have, uh, little bite-sized listening sessions, uh, uh, of explainers of, A, are you curious about changes to drug law that, that are coming to, to DC? Um, and, and discuss that. So you don't have to listen to a full, a full panel. Uh, that's, that's always a, a challenge. I'm fortunate enough to be able to take some time off in the middle of the day to, to listen in. Uh, but, but not everybody's able to do that. And thankfully, things are recorded and virtual now, which makes it easier. Uh, but it, the, the smaller chunks, uh, because not every section of the criminal code is, feels relevant to everybody. Uh, so I, I think there's, there's value in, in breaking that down and, and in committee, uh, communication, uh, I imagine, you know, some sort of fact sheet uh, that, that you'll produce, uh, as part of the, the committee report, um, with some top-line summaries would, would also be very helpful. That, uh, break away from the, the statute code-ish language and just like, here are four things that are happening uh, that, that you are, are excited about, that CCRC is, is really excited about. And that's, uh, something that'll give normal, more laypeople, uh, something to latch on to.
Okay, thanks. Um, Mr. Douglas, if I can turn to you for a moment, um. Appreciate your testimony and, um, and really appreciate you sharing, you know, your own experience and, and the story you shared. Um, you know, I, I realize it's just one story, but it probably is indicative of the challenges that, that get faced, um, on a pretty regular basis. Um, you know, kind of one of the things that I think you could take away from that certainly is that officers are gonna have to make decisions kind of on the fly in many cases, um, as to whether a law has been broken and then which law. Um, and then as you kind of just really well kind of laid out, you can have three officers that have three different interpretations of exactly what happened and where to go. Um, that's probably gonna be challenging, even in the best of circumstances. Um, but unclear statutes, just make this job, make that job even harder. I think that was one of the points you were helping, helping really highlight. Um, I mean, when you had a, an act, like using that example, uh, that you shared with us, you have a genuine question about the scope of the law. Was the training to turn to Google? I wasn't sure if you were like literally saying you turn to Google, if, if that was kind of what everyone said, that's what our training tells us. Let's go Google it or, uh, or, or not. My hunch is we probably need something more than Google.
Um, yes, so our training is not to go to Google. Um, um, and, uh, what happened was, you know, you aren't taught in academy to memorize statues by, you know, by word for word, word for word. Um, and the only place you, um, I've known to access the DC code besides a big textbook that I have was online. And immediately that's the quickest and most accessible way to, um, figure out what the statue was. And then we have, we, we did look it up. Um, and this wasn't what I thought it should be or, or could have been, you know. It was very, very unclear. It left out the elements that you can use to actually decide if this particular offense has been, um, broken. And, um, yeah, so our training is not to go.
Got it. And the, all right, so and then again, this kind of the, the story you shared, so three different officers kind of had three different interpretations of what the charge could or should be. Um, and each of those different charges would carry a different penalty if convicted, correct? Okay, um. So. Is there a, um? This is, this again, like there's things that we can handle within a criminal code revision, and there's things, of course, that are separate from that. And this would be a question, I guess, separate from that. But, um, in the same way that, uh, a couple of years ago, working with the Attorney General, uh, when it came to, uh, young people, created essentially a twenty-four you know, hotline, twenty-five hour hotline, it's a little call for referral. In those types of situations, three officers who've gone through the training academy, who've been trained, who, you know, who are professionals in their space, uh, and they don't know. Have a hotline to call, you know, uh, somebody there who's able to say, here's, let me make sure I read, like, having to force you to turn to Google just doesn't seem like a great idea. But having a hotline or something that, that makes sense maybe a little more operationally? In addition, of course, let's just have some more clarity.
Yeah, absolutely. I think a twenty-four seven hotline for, uh, a trained professional who knows the DC code in and out will be extremely helpful. Um, but I think just, um, just initially bringing the code that is simple, concise and easily accessible will do wonders for, um, officers on all levels, to, to, um, sergeants, detectives and everything. Um, I think just really making a space where, um, we have access to this information, not only law enforcement but, um, the everyday citizen, you know, um, and the resident who, who wants to know what is it, what is a law?
You know, what is? You're anticipating my next question. All right, but the, if the, and I want to get your thoughts on this. If the op, if the operating theory we hear sometimes is that, you know, if you can have a tough enough law and you can have an extreme penalty to it, it'll act as, as a deterrent. If, if we have officers that have that uncertainty and lack of clarity about exactly what was, uh, you know, what act was committed. What thing, uh, what behavior, what action is illegal and exactly how is it illegal and what would be charged? How is, how could there be any expectation that a resident? If we are assuming that people are making very cold, logical decisions at every stage of their life, um, that they're somehow gonna know, okay, well, I do. You know, if I keep the knife in my hand, blade closed and don't brandish it, here's what would happen here. But wait, if I open the blade, then this is what would happen next. Or if I pointed at someone, then that's what, how would we have any expectation that a resident would be able to actually coldly logically be able to follow through all those spaces if three individuals trained and professionals in that space can also come with three different interpretations?
Um, good question. Uh, I really can't tell you how someone in a heat of the moment while they're, you know, committing a crime, what they should and should not do, or, um, how they're gonna walk through it in their head. But what I can say is that, um, we, we know from research, plenty of research that, you know, longer sentences, harsher penalties does not deter anyone from, from committing crimes, not that at all. So I think we really have to start to, start to change the narrative and really promote, um, revised criminal code because, um, not only does it change some of the, uh, penalties in the law, but it just makes, I think, a more streamlined for everyone to understand.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I, yeah, I, that makes a lot of sense. I appreciate you being able to speak to that, too. Um. Let me ask one more question if I can. We, we've heard testimony today and, and a prior appearance. Um, many offenses that are on the books are rarely or never actually charged by prosecutors. Um, but based on your experience as a law enforcement officer, can even the threat of arrest for civil, civil violation or the rest for a violation just chill behavior or lead to unnecessary encounters with law enforcement? Um, I think one of the things we've heard is, well, you, you need to keep things on the books because otherwise people, you know, people may act in a way that's contrary. So you keep things on the books even if they're never used.
Um, me personally, I don't think that you should keep things on the books just because they're never used. Um, well, you should keep them on the books just because, yeah, they're never used. Um, if, if you want to have a strict streamlined criminal code, everything that's in the criminal code should be used. You know, it shouldn't be, things are just there to be placeholders or as deterrents or as, um, just maybe, you know, we want to have a criminal code that's um, concise and very, very direct and really, really sets the standard for what, um, DC's, um, laws should be.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Below, if I can turn to you and I'm gonna build a little bit on what Mr. Douglas and I were just saying. Um. About, and what I mean with it, the one to follow up on is related to the existing, to the current criminal laws, criminal code being accessible, understandable. Uh, if we, if we get examples of, um, you know, uh, legal professionals that are unclear about exactly what the clarity is. Do you think that the district's criminal laws are accessible just to the average person, uh, to the regular person in our, in our city? Um, you know, so for an individual who, who may commit a criminal act, do they understand? Do you think the laws, uh, criminalizing that behavior or what the penalties on the books are, or whether those penalties then are understood enough to then be that deterrent effect that people, uh, would want the, the consequence to be that it becomes the deterrent?
Um, no. Uh, accessible, yes, because as Mr. Douglas stated, he was able to pull it up on Google and find it. But understandable and clear, no. Uh, there's door must have the incarceration, there were individuals who had been incarcerated for ten, fifteen, twenty years. And all they did the entire time of their incarceration was study in the law lab, learn, study laws. And these guys still had trouble understanding, like, okay, so what does this actually mean? Right. You know what I mean? Like, being able to interpret, for instance, um, uh, kidnapping. Um, one individual had, uh, said that he shoved someone and he moved a few feet. And he was charged with kidnapping because he moved a few feet from his original location. Um. Me myself, I don't understand that. And he didn't either. And the, what they called him were the jailhouse lawyers. When they were looking through all the statutes and all, all the bills and law, like, they didn't understand it. And so I don't even see, like, something that they to be charged with something as severe as kidnapping. I mean, that's like, that's unfathomable to me.
Uh, yeah, that is a really great example you shared, because we, we heard that in the first hearing as well, that you have, um, a legal concept in term within the criminal code that is very vague and open. And then yet also carries very significant mandatory minimums. Um, and so I think that's, that is a, it's a really perfect example that, that you brought.
And again, the danger is that interpretation and that discretion being left to any one individual. Like, had it been another arresting officer, maybe the outcomes would have been different. Had it been another individual arrested, maybe the outcome would have been different. maybe the outcome would have been different. There's too many mitigating factors left to circumstance rather than just a clear, concise, this is what happened. And this is, it's just too much left to individual interpretation and discretion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Blow. Um, let me turn to, um, Jeremiah Anthony, Rix Rogers and Queen. I do see, both of you, if I can, both of you kind of use the term decriminalization in your testimony. And I just want to give you a chance to kind of help walk through this a little bit. Because I try to make sure I understand, uh, how intentional the choice of your words are of saying decriminalization versus legalization. And could you maybe talk about, how do you, how do you see or define the differences between those two terms? If it is, if you are intentionally saying decriminalization versus legalization, just so we can help, help wrap our heads around that a little bit more.
Yeah, so that's a great question. Um, we were in our intentional, but state decriminalization, we mean removing criminal penalties. And for us, legalization implies establishing a regulatory system, um, which is not what we're suggesting here. We're just suggesting the removal of criminal penalties. And like I mentioned in my testimony, our ask is that there's a commission that's set up with experts, including people who use drugs, um, to weigh in on what personal use quantity should be. And then the proposal slash the bill that we hope would be introduced and moved will decriminalize up until that point. Uh, but there will no, there will not be a regulated market, um, or any commercialization of the substances that we're talking about.
Jeremiah Anthony, anything you want to add to that?
Um, not particularly. Um, what I will say is that I think, you know, not using, um, you know, any, you know, quote, and I'll say fancy terms here, right? Just in the very bare bones, right? We are seeking to stop criminal law, well, that's a fancy word, I guess, but to stop, you know, arresting people, stop putting people in jail. Stop making people have to engage with the, um, with the legal carceral justice systems because of drugs, right? Um, that's the focus of decriminalization. It is less about, again, having, you know, um, like, as, as Queen said, regulatory systems and, and all these other things in place. It's literally just to ensure that people can live lives, um, safely, um, use safely. Um, and that there's a community that, that supports. And, um, I was gonna say one more thing about that. And it left me, it'll probably come back in a moment.
I mean, I, I think decriminal will not address the supply issue, which is part of why we're trying to beef up harm reduction infrastructure, checking, harm reduction centers. Like, it's not about, like, safe supply, which is something we see in Canada, which, you know, would be ideal. But I think in the, the context that we're in, I mean, what's probably more viable is at minimum ending drug arrests for personal use quantities. So we can actually address this as a public health issue um, and allow for people to not accidentally die from using drugs.
Yes, and I, I just want to piggyback on that. Thank you, Queen. That's what I was trying to say. Is that, you know, de- decriminalization is not the end all be all, right? Because if you say, you know, okay, people are not going, like, no, no crim- uh, criminal penalties, no criminal penalties for, you know, drug use and drug possession, but then there are not, you know, institu-, I won't say institutions, but, but, um, well, structures, right, in place that really allow for people to, you know, consume safely, right? So people can be more educated about drugs and drug use and things of that nature, right? It's a, it's a, it's a multifaceted, um, uh, approach, a multi-pronged approach. And, you know, we are talking again about decriminalization and using that as a vehicle, but again, decriminalization is not the end all be all. It is in conjunction with the idea that it is a public health issue and not just a criminalizing, a criminal issue, a justice issue, if you will.
Okay. Let me, um, uh, and, and my question is kind of rooted in trying to just think through like practical, uh, impacts or operational impacts of what you're talking about. So i- if I understand correctly, uh, but correct me if I'm wrong. Um, you're advocating and supporting decriminalizing possession of any quantity of a controlled substance. Or am I hearing you say that if decriminalized if it's personal use quantities? Can you help, um, tell, tell what you mean?
So we're, we're advocating for the decriminalization of personal use quantities, which are not established yet. That's something that in our proposal, we included commission that would have experts who can explore and do all of the thoughtful thinking. I mean, grounded in actual science and evidence to establish what personal use quantities should be or would be for each substance. Um, you know, with a few different things to consider. Um, I think it's, it could be issued to just draw lines arbitrarily, which oftentimes, um, laws do. So, you know, this is the attempt to actually have a concerted effort to establish what personal use thresholds should be for each substance. And then the bill would decriminalize up until that point, um, establishing a personal use threshold.
Should there, um, should something like that move forward? Should it also try to bet, to, to define what constitutes personal use?
Yes, and that's what that commission would do. Um, our proposal has a commission of eighteen people. Um, again, including people who have experience with drug use, um, with substance use disorder, health providers, medical doctors, criminal legal experts, um, a whole host of people that I think will be a great, uh, group of people to try to sit in, but sit with what that should be. Um, and think intentionally about what that should be. Again, drawing arbitrary lines could have, you know, unintended consequences. So after an actual process, um, personal use quantities would be, um, defined by the commission and the bill would decriminalize up until that point.
Okay, got it. Um, and then last question on this, uh, because I know that's not actually what's in front of us right now, but I appreciate the conversation to kind of think that through a little more. Would it, so if the effort would be decriminalizing, would selling still be criminal, though? Like, what I'm trying to get is like for a practical impact.
Technically, yes.
Okay.
So we're addressing possession of, of drugs and technically use, though it's, it's really possession that's criminalized. But we do want to mitigate, you know, the potential harms of, and the overuse of possession with the tend to distribute charges, which is similar to what we saw with marijuana decriminalization, a huge uptick in possession with the tend to distribute charges. Um, so we do, at least in our proposal, take some steps to try to mitigate some of that. Um, but selling and, and trafficking is, it's not necessarily what we're addressing directly, um, mainly focusing on possession. And of, of, of personal use quantities.
But isn't there a conflict that exists somewhat around, uh, at some point, I'm gonna have to possess it to be able to sell it? And so, I guess, help that, kind of help me for practice, I'm just kind of trying to think through the practice.
The burden will be on the state to prove that a person is in possession because they're trying to sell versus a person who's possessing personal quantities because they're using, which is the majority of the case.
Got it. Okay, all right.
So we're intending to make sure that people who use drugs are not criminalized for the substances that they're using and instead met with services, um, to make sure that they're using in a safe way, they get access to thorough supplies. Um, they get connected to services. There's money in our, in our proposal for, you know, housing support and other harm reduction, um, services. The intention is to meet people who use drugs, and that's who we're, we're talking about. Um, and provide them with services. And also just keeping in mind, not everyone who uses drugs actually has an addiction. Um, it's actually a minority of folks who struggle with problematic drug use. But the law as it is now assumes anyone in possession with drugs has an addiction, um, which is part of why we want to be careful about not um, swapping out incarceration for coarse treatment. Um, and focusing our resources on the minority of folks who do have problematic drug use and are looking to, um, access treatment and services.
Okay, all right. I appreciate you being able to, to walk through that. Thank you very much. Um, I know that, uh, Mikiya Green has stepped away, so she, um, sent us a quick note that she's sending her written testimony to us, and I know we can follow up with her uh, on some additional questions. Um, so I want to thank everybody on this, uh, panel for your testimony and your advocacy and your answers. Um, thank you all for taking time out today. We really appreciate it. Uh, we have our third panel of public witnesses. We actually, um, are going to, because we had scheduled it to start around twelve thirty. Uh, so we have just a couple of minutes. What I'm probably gonna do is take just a five or 10 minute recess. And then what we'll do is we will reconvene with our third panel of public witnesses. So, uh, the time is now twelve fifteen PM. We're gonna take about a five or 10 minute recess and then we'll reconvene with our, uh, final public panel today. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
A restart, we took a short recess. The time is now 12:30 PM and we are going to go move forward with our third panel of public witnesses. I'm going to call everyone's name as we get started here. I've got Christopher Wildeman, professor of sociology at Duke University. Nick Robinson, senior legal advisor with the International Center for Not-for-Profit Law. Nastim Moshiri, policy director at the ACLU DC. Keisha Robinson, director of social policy and advocacy with the Black Public Defender Association. Tara Libert, executive director of Free Minds Book Club and Writing Workshop. Shannon Battle, advocacy and leadership development specialist with Free Minds Book Club and Writing Workshop. And Kylie Hogan, crisis response team director at DC Safe. So good afternoon to you all. Let's see, we'll go just kind of the order in which we have folks. And so I was going to start, let's see, Chris Wildeman, if you're there. Am I pronouncing that correctly? Is it Wildeman?
It's Wildeman, but I don't, I don't actually care.
Well, I just want to make sure I try to get it right. So good afternoon, I'll turn to you now.
Great, thank you. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Sorry, I'm realizing now that we probably all need to stop saying the opportunity to be anywhere since we're never anywhere anymore. So I apologize. So I'm going to do my best to be brief. Today, I want to say three, say three things based on my research on the collateral consequences of mass incarceration for families. First, the parental prison and jail incarceration and family member incarceration more broadly are extremely common and extremely unequally distributed by race, ethnicity, and also by socioeconomic status. So I think the best indicator of this in some ways is that nationally, 25% of African-American children will ever have a parent imprisoned. The comparison number for whites is about 3%. These disparities are almost certainly greater in the District of Columbia than elsewhere nationally, as the district has some of the greatest racial ethnic disparities in incarceration in the entire nation. Both parental incarceration and family member incarceration more broadly have consequences that are especially severe for the children and women, the wives, girlfriends, sisters, and mothers who are left behind when men are incarcerated. I want to spend most of my time talking about these effects, although I also want to be sure to not go over my time and maybe even go under since I know we have a lot to get through in this session. The best available research on the effects of incarceration on children indicates that having a father incarcerated makes what is often a difficult situation for children prior to incarceration significantly worse. As a result of paternal incarceration, many children struggle with greater financial insecurity, disruptions to caregiver arrangements, and the stigma of having their father incarcerated. Children then go on to experience elevated rates of behavioral and mental health problems, difficulties in school, and struggles with peers in childhood and adolescence. Their transitions to adulthood are then further imperiled with elevated rates of high school dropout, low rates of transition to college, elevated rates of housing instability, including homelessness, and a range of other struggles. Children with incarcerated fathers, especially boys with incarcerated fathers, also go on to experience elevated rates of contact with the criminal justice system themselves. These high rates appear to be at least partially attributable to the actual incarceration experience their fathers endured. The women attached to men who experience incarceration also appear to suffer grief. Mothers, for instance, a group that receives far less attention in this area than they should, struggle with poor mental and physical health as a result of the incarceration for their son, of their son. Women who have children with men who experience incarceration furthermore, struggle with increases in depression upon his incarceration. And women who have any family member incarcerated struggle with a whole range of health problems that elevate their risk of having cardiovascular disease. The causal evidence regarding these health effects on women is less robust than the evidence for children, which is largely a result of data limitations. But the story nonetheless consistently indicates that even though families that experience incarceration were often struggling before that, the incarceration often makes a tricky family situation far worse. Third, and I know that I'm nearing the end of my time, this combination of features, high and highly unequally distributed risks of family member incarceration, and negative effects of that event almost certainly exacerbate inequality between black and white and rich and poor families in the United States. Because of the higher-than-average disparities in incarceration in the district, these effects on racial and socioeconomic inequality are almost certainly greater in the district than nationally, and could have effects that ripple out for generations. That being said, I thank you for your time and I look forward to hearing the testimony from the other folks on the panel, who I'm honestly just thrilled and honored to be able to speak alongside or quasi-alongside, virtual alongside.
You're alongside on my screen, so it counts. So excellent, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Next, let me turn to Nick Robinson. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thanks for providing me the opportunity to speak today. So I'm a senior legal advisor at the US Program of the International Center for Not-for-Profit Law, based here in Washington DC. We welcome the proposed changes to the offensive rioting in the Revised Criminal Code Act of 2021, which would much better address First Amendment concerns with the current law while still dealing with legitimate public safety needs. Last year, the US saw overbroad and outdated anti-riot acts being used to target and harass peaceful protesters during the nationwide demonstrations for racial justice. The DC rioting act also has a history of abuse, including against J-20 protesters on inauguration day of President Trump in 2017. At ICNL, we have surveyed rioting laws in all 50 states and Washington DC. These laws, including in DC, are generally modeled on an English common law tradition, where the offensive rioting was designed as a heavy-handed tool used by the Crown to target political and religious dissent. Rioting laws in the US frequently include at least one of three major defects that undermine core First Amendment rights, and current DC law suffers from all of these defects. First, the current rioting law can be interpreted to create liability for simply being part of a crowd where others engage in riotous conduct, like kicking over a trash can. In other words, the offensive rioting can create guilt by association, which is unconstitutional under the First Amendment. Second, current DC law can create liability for rioting that does not result in actual violence or property destruction, but simply its threat, which creates a subjective and vague standard for enforcement. Third, about half of the states, including DC, have incitement to riot offense, which has a history of being used to target protected, to target protected First Amendment speech, such as merely provocative speech. DC's incitement to riot provision includes prohibiting, quote-unquote, urging someone to riot. The Fourth and Ninth Circuits recently found that similar incitement language in the federal Anti-Riot Act was unconstitutionally overbroad. The changes to the code being considered today are a clear improvement. The new code would eliminate the crime of incitement to riot altogether, putting DC into the company of about half of US states. It would require that an individual charged with rioting knowingly commit or attempt to commit a criminal offense that causes bodily injury, taking of property, or damage to property. Importantly, it also requires that the person convicted of rioting be reckless as to the fact that seven or more other people are also engaging in similar conduct nearby. In other words, it would substantially limit the possibility for the offense to create guilt by association and create a much clearer standard for enforcement. The proposed changes to the rioting offense are a positive step forward. The government has clear interests in deterring and stopping riots, but rioting offenses have historically not been effective at this purpose. Instead, they have frequently been abused to undermine the freedom of peaceful assembly. Arguably, there's really no reason for a rioting offense at all. If someone commits violence or vandalism, they can be punished frequently severely for assault, destruction of property, or another related crime. Three states, Wisconsin, Nebraska, and Wyoming, do not have a rioting offense at all. The federal government did not until 1968. The district's current Anti-Rioting Act dates from 1967 and was enacted as a heavy-handed response to the 1960s' race riots. In response to the Capitol attack in January of this year, federal prosecutors have now prosecuted over 700 individuals, including for a range of serious crimes, but none for rioting or incitement to riot under either federal or district law. At least until now, federal prosecutors have in general adopted a more targeted approach and shied away from outdated and constitutionally suspect rioting offenses. Data I received from the DC Sentencing Commission and that I will submit for the record covering the period of 2012 to 2020 shows that the DC rioting act has rarely been used, and when it has been used, it is for mass arrests that rarely result in successful prosecutions. As many have long recognized, including a majority of the city council, that co-sponsored the rioting modernization amendment act last year, DC's current Anti-Rioting Act is deeply flawed and needs substantial reform. The proposed changes to DC's rioting offenses in the Revised Criminal Code would be a major step forward and could serve as a potential model for the country. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Robinson. Next, let me turn to Nastim Moshiri, policy director with ACLU DC.
My God, sorry about that.
That's all right. Good afternoon.
It's only been two years of using, I'm still getting used to it. Good afternoon, Chairperson Allen and members of the committee. My name is Nastim Moshiri and I am policy director at the ACLU of the District of Columbia. I present the following testimony on behalf of our more than 15,000 members and supporters across the district. The ACLU DC is committed to working to dismantle systemic racism, improve police accountability, safeguard fundamental liberties, and advocate for sensible, evidence-based solutions to criminal justice policies and public safety. I'm pleased to testify today in strong support of the Revised Criminal Code Act. The RCCA is an overdue modernization of the DC Criminal Code. It significantly improves a code that retains outdated language, disproportionate punishments, and contradictory provisions that have systematically undermined the civil rights and civil liberties of district residents and which have contributed to DC having one of the highest incarceration rates in the country, with black men making up over 95% of those incarcerated under DC code offenses. The district's lack of control over
Have a parent imprisoned, the comparison number for whites is about three percent. These disparities are almost certainly greater in the District of Columbia than elsewhere nationally, as the district has some of the greatest racial ethnic disparities and incarceration in the entire nation. Both parental incarceration and family member incarceration incarceration more broadly have consequences that are especially severe for the children and women, the wives, girlfriends, sisters, and mothers who are left behind when men are incarcerated. I want to spend most of my time talking about these effects, although I also want to be sure to not go over my time and maybe even go under since I know we have a lot to get through in this session. The best available research on the effects of incarceration on children indicates that having a father incarcerated makes what is often a difficult situation for children prior to incarceration significantly worse. As a result of paternal incarceration, many children struggle with greater financial insecurity, disruptions to caregiver arrangements, and the stigma of having their father incarcerated. Children then go on to experience elevated rates of behavioral and mental health problems, difficulties in school, and struggles with peers in childhood and adolescence. Their transitions to adulthood are then further imperiled with elevated rates of high school dropout, low rates of transition to college, elevated rates of housing instability, including homelessness, and a range of other struggles. Children with incarcerated fathers, especially boys with incarcerated fathers, also go on to experience elevated rates of contact with the criminal justice system themselves. These high rates appear to be at least partially attributable to the actual incarceration experience their fathers endured. The women attached to men who experience incarceration also appear to suffer grief. Mothers, for instance, a group that receives far less attention in this area than they should, struggle with poor mental and physical health as a result of the incarceration for their son, of their son. Women who have children with men who experience incarceration furthermore, struggle with increases in depression upon his incarceration, and women who have any family member incarcerated struggle with a whole range of health problems that elevate their risk of having cardiovascular disease. The causal evidence regarding these health effects on women is less robust than the evidence for children, which is largely a result of data limitations. But the story nonetheless consistently indicates that even though families that experience incarceration were often struggling before that, the incarceration often makes a tricky family situation far worse. Third, and I know that I'm nearing the end of my time, this combination of features, high and highly unequally distributed risks of family member incarceration, and negative effects of that event almost certainly exacerbate inequality between black and white and rich and poor families in the United States. Because of the higher-than-average disparities in incarceration in the district, these effects on racial and socioeconomic inequality are almost certainly greater in the district than nationally and could have effects that ripple out for generations. And that being said, I thank you for your time and I look forward to hearing the testimony from the other folks on the panel who I'm honestly just thrilled and honored to be able to speak alongside or quasi-alongside, virtual alongside.
You're alongside on my screen, so it counts. So excellent, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Next, let me turn to Nick Robinson. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thanks for providing me the opportunity to speak today. So I'm a senior legal advisor at the U.S. Program of the International Center for Not-for-Profit Law, based here in Washington, D.C. We welcome the proposed changes to the offensive rioting in the Revised Criminal Code Act of 2021, which would much better address First Amendment concerns with the current law while still dealing with legitimate public safety needs. Last year, the U.S. saw overbroad and outdated anti-riot acts being used to target and harass peaceful protesters during the nationwide demonstrations for racial justice. The D.C. rioting act also has a history of abuse, including against J-20 protesters on inauguration day of President Trump in 2017. At ICNL, we have surveyed rioting laws in all 50 states and Washington, D.C. These laws, including in D.C., are generally modeled on an English common law tradition, where the offensive rioting was designed as a heavy-handed tool used by the Crown to target political and religious dissent. Rioting laws in the U.S. frequently include at least one of three major defects that undermine core First Amendment rights, and current D.C. law suffers from all of these defects. First, the current rioting law can be interpreted to create liability for simply being part of a crowd where others engage in riotous conduct, like kicking over a trash can. In other words, the offensive rioting can create guilt by association, which is unconstitutional under the First Amendment. Second, current D.C. law can create liability for rioting that does not result in actual violence or property destruction, but simply its threat, which creates a subjective and vague standard for enforcement. Third, about half of the states, including D.C., have incitement to riot offense, which has a history of being used to target protected, to target protected First Amendment speech, such as merely provocative speech. D.C.'s incitement to riot provision includes prohibiting, quote-unquote, urging someone to riot. The Fourth and Ninth Circuits recently found that similar incitement language in the federal Anti-Riot Act was unconstitutionally overbroad. The changes to the code being considered today are a clear improvement. The new code would eliminate the crime of incitement to riot altogether, putting D.C. into the company of about half of U.S. states. It would require that an individual charged with rioting knowingly commit or attempt to commit a criminal offense that causes bodily injury, taking of property, or damage to property. Importantly, it also requires that the person convicted of rioting be reckless as to the fact that seven or more other people are also engaging in similar conduct nearby. In other words, it would substantially limit the possibility for the offense to create guilt by association and create a much clearer standard for enforcement. The proposed changes to the rioting offense are a positive step forward. The government has clear interests in deterring and stopping riots, but rioting offenses have historically not been effective at this purpose. Instead, they have frequently been abused to undermine the freedom of peaceful assembly. Arguably, there's, you know, really no reason for a rioting offense at all. If someone commits violence or vandalism, they can be punished frequently severely for assault, destruction of property, or another related crime. Three states, Wisconsin, Nebraska, and Wyoming, do not have a rioting offense at all. The federal government did not until 1968. The district's current Anti-Rioting Act dates from 1967 and was enacted as a heavy-handed response to the 1960s race riots. In response to the Capitol attack in January of this year, federal prosecutors have now prosecuted over 700 individuals, including for a range of serious crimes, but none for rioting or incitement to riot under either federal or district law. At least until now, federal prosecutors have in general adopted a more targeted approach and shied away from outdated and constitutionally suspect rioting offenses. Data I received from the D.C. Sentencing Commission and that I will submit for the record covering the period of 2012 to 2020 shows that the D.C. rioting act has rarely been used, and when it has been used, it is for mass arrests that rarely result in successful prosecutions. As many have long recognized, including a majority of the city council, that co-sponsored the rioting modernization amendment act last year, D.C.'s current Anti-Riding Act is deeply flawed and needs substantial reform. The proposed changes to D.C.'s rioting offenses in the Revised Criminal Code would be a major step forward and could serve as a potential model for the country. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. Next, let me turn to Nassim Moshi, Policy Director with ACLU DC.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Good afternoon.
It's only been two years of using, I'm still getting used to it. Good afternoon, Chairperson Allen and members of the committee. My name is Nassim Moshi, and I am Policy Director at the ACLU of the District of Columbia. I present the following testimony on behalf of our more than 15,000 members and supporters across the district. The ACLU DC is committed to working to dismantle systemic racism, improve police accountability, safeguard fundamental liberties, and advocate for sensible, evidence-based solutions to criminal justice policies and public safety. I'm pleased to testify today in strong support of the Revised Criminal Code Act. The RCCA is an overdue modernization of the D.C. criminal code. It significantly improves a code that retains outdated language, disproportionate punishments, and contradictory provisions that have systematically undermined the civil rights and civil liberties of district residents and which have contributed to D.C. having one of the highest incarceration rates in the country, with black men making up over 95% of those incarcerated under D.C. code offenses. The district's lack of control over key aspects of our criminal legal system have long stood in the way of meaningful reforms to tackle systemic racism and anti-black policies in which our system is rooted. These policies have perpetuated racial inequality, and in the name of public safety, they've made our communities demonstrably less safe by subjecting thousands of black district residents to criminalization and incarceration. However, while the district continues to lack necessary control over courts, prosecutors, its prison system, and parole, it does maintain control over its criminal laws. In recent years, the council has enacted reforms to reduce lengthy sentences, rein in prosecutorial abuse, and clear ambiguities in the code that have stood in the way of due process. The ACLU DC has supported many of these efforts, but piecemeal reforms cannot fix a criminal code that has significant structural problems and that has not undergone any meaningful review in over 100 years. The RCCA brings the district's criminal code in line with national best, national standards and best practices, both structurally and substantively, creating a proportionate classification system for penalties, expanding jury demandability for misdemeanors, ending mandatory minimums in favor of judicial discretion, and expanding access to resentencing are four key ways that the revised code will have a measurable impact on making our system more just. A critical component of the revised code is its focus on clarity and consistency across offenses and penalties. It codifies general definitions of terms, legal requirements that apply across the code and in many places replaces language in the code that is constitutionally vague and repeals provisions that are unconstitutional on their face. As the Supreme Court has explained, the government violates the Fifth Amendment guarantee of due process by taking away someone's life, liberty, or property under a criminal law that is so vague it fails to give ordinary people fair notice of the conduct it punishes or so standardless that it invites arbitrary enforcement. In simpler language, it is essential that our criminal laws be clear in defining what is and is not criminal conduct. Title 22 is composed of dozens of different laws enacted by different legislatures over nearly two centuries, many of them containing terms that are antiquated or left undefined. For example, under the current D.C. code, it is unlawful for a person to crowd, obstruct, or incommod the use of any street, avenue, alley, road, highway, or sidewalk. None of the verbs crowd, obstruct, or incommod are defined in statute or case law, but people have been arrested under the statute for sitting on a small portion of downtown sidewalk while leaving plenty of room for other passersby. To resolve this ambiguity, the revised, the revised code codifies a standardized definition of what constitutes blocking, and it clarifies that the statute does not provide liability for mere loitering, where a person can still navigate around the accused without undue risk. This change improves the clarity of the revised statute and will prevent unwarranted arrests and prosecutions. There are many other examples where the revised code has significantly improved clarity of offenses in a way that makes district laws clear to the individuals who have to abide by them, to police officers who enforce them, and to judges and jurors that have to apply them. Other statutes that stand out to us that are much improved include provisions on rioting and on disorderly conduct, two laws that, under the existing code, in our experience, are commonly overused and arbitrarily enforced by police officers. Finally, we acknowledge that the Revised Criminal Code does not fix every issue with the D.C. code, and adopting it will not end the racial inequities and harms inherent in our criminal legal system. In many places, our position is that the code does not go far enough to end criminalization of offenses that would be better addressed through public health interventions like drug use or sex work. However, the RCCA does create a clear, complete, and consistent code to which the D.C. Council and community stakeholders can more effectively make changes and move the district away from a carceral approach to one that focuses on prevention, intervention, and rehabilitation. We applaud the hard work of the CCRC, really monumental work in developing these recommendations, and we urge the council to adopt this bill and bring the district's criminal code into the modern era. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I should have said this is the beginning. For our panelists, if you can hang in there, we're going to have everybody testify, then I'll come back with questions afterwards. So if you're able to stick with us, please do so. Next, let me turn to Keisha Robinson, the Director of Social Policy and Advocacy with the Black Public Defender Association. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chairman Allen, and members of the committee for the opportunity to testify today. I have borne witness to the harm of our criminal code for almost 20 years. My name is Keisha Robinson, and I am the Director of Social Policy and Advocacy at the Black Public Defender Association. For identification purposes only and to give context to my remarks, I note that I am also the Deputy Chief of Prisoner and Reentry Legal Services at the Public Defender Service for the District of Columbia. However, I speak today only on behalf of BPDA. At BPDA, our work is both professional and deeply personal because we have a unique and intimate understanding of the criminal legal system's deathly grip on black communities. Our national membership includes black public defenders, black social workers, investigators, mitigators, and other public defender professionals who work within and are experts on D.C.'s criminal legal system. It's with this expertise and lens that BPDA supports the Revised Criminal Code Act of 2021. We believe this bill would allow the district to confront and reverse some of its racially disparate criminal laws. It is widely known that black people in black communities have endured the most significant harm from the criminal punishment system. This could not be more true than here in the district, where black residents are arrested 10 times the rate of white residents. We are eight in 10 arrests, nine in 10 in the jail, and almost 100% of the D.C. population in the BOP. In my entire career, I can count on one hand the number of white clients I have represented. Even black children are not seen as children. They are criminalized and funneled into a system that is comprised almost exclusively of black children. The criminal punishment system in the district by design targets and entraps black people in a cycle of family separation, government surveillance, economic hardship, and other life-altering harms that are referred to as collateral consequences. But as black public defenders, we see daily through our clients and fellow community members that there is nothing collateral about losing access to your family, essential resources, being trapped in poverty, ostracized from society, and forced into circumstances that often lead to future contact with the criminal system. This system only serves to harm black people. We are suffering. It does not deliver a safety or justice, and it must be dismantled. Overhauling and reforming D.C.'s criminal code is a step in the right direction to correct decades of harm inflicted on black communities. Mandatory minimums have not only been proven to be ineffective public safety measures, but they are also applied disproportionately to black communities. We must eliminate these ineffective and racially biased sentencing laws from the criminal code. Black parents, siblings, grandparents, and community members have endured the brunt of D.C.'s harsh sentencing laws. We also believe that second look sentence mechanisms are desperately needed to reduce mass incarceration. There are too many black D.C. residents languishing in prisons for decades. Lastly, BPDA supports the bill's proposal to divert children who are 11 years old and younger away from the youth legal system. Black children and their families, they don't need incarceration, family separation, and unrelenting government supervision. They need community resources. Even though BPDA supports the bill and believes it would be a step toward decarceration, we would be remiss not to acknowledge that it does not go far enough to dismantle the harms inflicted on black communities. Under the current provisions of the bill, prison penalties are reduced, but they are still too long. Even with these proposed reforms, black D.C. residents would still be incarcerated thousands of miles away and separated from their families and communities for years on end. By relegating black people to cages for decades, the district is in essence proclaiming that black suffering can never be too long, too violent, or too painful. By endorsing lengthy prison sentences, the district is denying its black residents our humanity. It's failing to recognize and address our suffering at the hands of a system born from chattel slavery. We cannot advance racial justice by doubling down on policies built to harm black communities. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'm available to answer any questions the committee has.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. Next, let me turn to Tara Liebert, Executive Director with Free Minds Book Club and Writing Workshop.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon. Thank you so much, Chairman Allen, for this opportunity to testify on this critical need in our city revising D.C.'s criminal code. My name is Tara Liebert. I'm the co-founder and executive director of Free Minds Book Club and Writing Workshop, a D.C. nonprofit that supports incarcerated and formerly incarcerated youth and adults. We use literary arts, workforce development, peer support, trauma healing, and most importantly, advocacy to create both individual and community change. We have served nearly 2,000 formerly incarcerated and home youth and adults since 2002. Our recidivism rate is just 10% compared to about 60% in D.C. I'm here today to strongly urge the passage of the Revised Criminal Code, but with a special emphasis on implementing judicial review after 15 years for everyone in the carceral system. The current code is not only dated unclear and vague, as we've heard other panelists, it is racist. Its punitive laws prevent true transformative justice, and the overhaul today is only a first step of a major movement that must be enacted in our city. We must implement community alternatives to incarceration for real healing and racial justice. As a literacy organization who believes passionately in the power of language to either unite or divide, the current code essentially says to community members, you are excluded. It's too complicated. It's too punitive. It's long overdue. This will make a massive difference in the lives of those impacted. On paper, the criminal code is legal language. I'm here today to share with you the real impact the code has on people's lives. For over 20 years, almost working with youth and adults, I have sat in the D.C. Superior Court hundreds of times, and I've seen firsthand how extreme sentences and mandatory minimums have devastated youth, their families, their communities, and our entire city. Among the changes that will make a huge difference in the lives of our Free Minds members and everyone is the elimination of life and life without parole, hearing the word, and the reduction of maximum penalties to 45 years. One of the most devastating moments in two decades, in many moments I've worked at Free Minds, is hearing youth charges adults sentenced to over 90 years and the words "left," "life." That means death to a young person. We need to have judicial review for everyone, no matter what their age is. As the Sentencing Project has reported, and we've heard today, 15 years is the length of most, is after 15 years, people have largely aged out of engaging in behavior against the law. We have three years of evidence showing us how well the second look legislation is working, and I thank you and the committee for enacting that. As you know, the folks released under IRA 1.2, and now we have five, five members under IRA 3.0, are incredible champions of our city. They have an extremely low recidivation rate, a high employment rate, and are changing every day, working with youth. You'll hear from my colleague Shannon Battle about what he is doing and his fellow Free Minds, fellow IRA recipients. There are no, so many of these statutes are short and so vague that it's impossible to know the elements of what the offenses actually are. So many of our members have been, once they're home, arrested for drug offenses, for assault, for regularly minor infractions that result in disportionately high penalties. Thank you for, wait, I have the wrong, sorry. I want to also say about, one of our members was home, and he had stolen an iPad and got an incredibly high sentence after that because of his prior offenses and because of the code. It devastated his family and his life. I just want to thank you, the Criminal Code Reform Commission, for your tireless work. We would become a model for beginning the process of humane criminal justice reform, as Keisha just said. We lag so far behind, and the fact that it has references to steamboats and statutes from the civil rights era, it only proves its racist language and how we need to update it. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much. And next, let me turn to Shannon Battle, also with Free Minds Book Club and Writing Workshop.
Good afternoon, Chairman Allen and all the council members. My name is Shannon Battle, and I'm the Advocacy and Leadership Development Specialist at Free Minds Book Club and Writing Workshop. As you just heard from my colleague Tara, Free Minds work with incarcerated and formerly incarcerated youth and adults using literary arts, workforce development, peer support, trauma healing, and advocacy to create personal and community change. I lead our advocacy efforts in partnership with other returned citizens and coalition partners and provide leadership development opportunities for our members. I am here today to urge you to pass all aspects of the Revised Criminal Code Act of 2021. When I was a teenager, I was sentenced to a 35-year-to-life sentence as a juvenile lifer. I served 25 years of prison and was ultimately released under IRA, thanks to the councilman. To get a life sentence as a kid is extremely traumatizing. It can be mentally devastating experience. So many people given those type of sentences think their life is over. Had I been charged under the new criminal code, which eliminates mandatory minimum, life sentence, my sentence would have been much more reduced, and I would have, I would have did less time and probably would have been released before serving 20 years. And I would have been able to get back to my community as I'm doing now. I also support the expansion of judicial review included in this legislation. A friend of mine who I talk to regularly, I mean, a good man who was locked up, is happy for guys like myself and our peers who receive judicial review and was released, and he's very supportive of us. But he was kind of despondent about his situation because he was 25 years old and wasn't eligible to receive the same judicial review. There was so many people like this guy, I mean, who I talked to and peers who are 26, 27 years old, who are convicted, who get life sentences, and they will usually do around 30, 40 years before they become eligible for parole. And it can be demoralizing and discouraging experience to watch your peers get released, yet just because you are a year or two older than them, you are not able to receive that same relief. But if judicial review was extended to them, it will give them hope and a future to look forward to. I'm no different from these guys who are still locked up. They should have the same opportunity for judicial review as I was. By handing down long-proved sentences, we are losing out on good men and women who can help have a positive impact on our community because, and help a lot of these kids not be subjected to trauma and harm of incarceration. The lived experience of these people we are keeping locked up is so valuable to the younger generation who look up to people who live in the same environment. Under the new code, we can bring men and women back to their communities where they will be a positive influence on the young people around them. And if you put these resources behind these men and women, you can de-escalate a lot of the violence that is going on in D.C. right now. And why are we spending so much money on, I mean, these guys that's being locked up? That are now serving time where we can use them same funds, reallocating them with these guys in the community, having a positive impact in the communities of D.C. I also would like to express my support for the elimination of juvenile delinquency for children under 11. In this new code, I facilitate a book club for young black boys who are shouldn't be subjected to any form of this system because I understand as a 12-year-old who was locked up, how traumatizing it can be for a kid. So I don't think that no, no one, no kid, 12, 13, especially 11, 10 years old, should be subjected to any form of handcuff or police, anything. And because it can be very traumatizing, it can have a lifelong effect on a kid. And I support eliminating anything that deals with subjecting the kid to this type of situation. We have already tried to increase public safety with these extreme sentences, and it hasn't worked. This code is essentially saying we are finding another way to improve public safety in the district. Thank you so much for the Criminal Code Reform Commission for all their efforts on the issue. And on behalf of the people subjected to high sentences, this law will make D.C. a safer, more just city, and I urge the D.C. Council to support it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Battle. And last, on this public And last on this public panel, I have Kylie Hogan, Crisis Response Team Director at DC Safe.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Allen and members of the committee. As you mentioned, my name is Kylie Hogan and I'm testifying on behalf of DC Safe in my capacity as the Crisis Intervention Team Director. As the largest access point for victims of domestic violence to city services, DC Safe assists nearly 8,000 survivors and families per year across all eight wards. And we are the only 24/7 crisis intervention agency for domestic violence in the District of Columbia. Since 2006, we have been at the forefront of civil and criminal court advocacy for survivors from their initial contact with law enforcement and throughout their participation in the civil and criminal justice process. Having worked with DC Safe for over seven years, I'm well acquainted with the struggles and frustration that survivors experience when they engage in these systems. And I believe that this legislation will help alleviate some of the barriers and frustrations that survivors experience. And on the whole, DC Safe supports the proposed changes to the district law. Many of these changes will benefit survivors, including creating more transparent and succinct definitions of the elements of criminal offenses and available defenses, establishing the concept of inflicting serious mental injury in addition to serious bodily injury, and defining parental kidnapping in a way that ensures that victims of domestic violence fleeing abuse are not unduly or unfairly penalized for seeking safety with or on behalf of their children. Transparent and detailed legal standards benefit survivors of domestic violence because it provides the predictability they need to engage in the system more confidently and allows them to understand and heal more fully. We do however, have some outstanding questions and concerns about how some of these changes may impact survivors in the actual application of the law. Offenders often commit a series of escalating offenses against victims aimed at establishing power and control in their relationships. While the harm of each individual incident may appear small, the larger pattern is one of persistent terror and the long-term damages are significant. And we would ask that any changes in the law must take into effect the cumulative, the cumulative outcome of an offender's behavior and inform the interpretation of pain and physical or mental injury or harm. One specific example of this concern is the defense of self-induced intoxication to crimes that could fall under the Interfamily Offense Act. While we strongly support the need to reduce incarceration and criminalization of those with substance use disorders as well as those with severe or persistent mental health challenges, we urge legislators to consider the underlying pattern of abuse that we highlighted before. When the outcome of someone's substance abuse is predictable and persistent violence toward their loved ones, we fear this defense creates a loophole that can further allow harm. In particular, we know that intoxication often escalates abuse and assaults fueled by drug or alcohol use are one indicator of a relationship at a high risk for serious injury or homicide. Similarly, while we support decriminalization and just judicial discretion in many areas, particularly for petty offenses, we fear that the socially mediated tendency to misunderstand and minimize the harm of domestic violence may show up when judges are permitted to dismiss cases that do not seem to cause the harm that courts perceive as adequate. In addition, because of the persistent societal misprocesses of domestic violence and the common experience of shame and reluctance for survivors to come forward and continue with court cases, we have some reservations about the impact of juries on misdemeanor prosecutions for domestic violence. Survivors are often fearful of the consequences in their community if that community finds out that they have engaged and cooperated in the criminal justice system. While we strongly support any and all of the defendant's constitutional rights, we worry that this change will leave survivors less likely to follow through, that prosecutors will be more readily, ready to doubt their participation or the possibility of success at trial. And offenders may reap the benefits of this change in a manner that compromises the safety of victims from the person who is so adept at silencing them in the first place. Finally, although any specific changes to language in this legislation will be provided in written testimony, we'd like to request that the use of the term complainant be changed to victim throughout the code. The term complainant, though, an attempt at neutrality puts undue responsibility for the criminal case on the person who is potentially harmed rather than the harm doer and does not accurately reflect the lived realities of the criminal justice system. A defendant is innocent until proven guilty, but victims are not responsible for bringing a complaint or complaining per se. In fact, this term brings to mind an attempt by local politicians in Georgia to label anyone filing a report of sexual assault as the accuser. In other words, the person who is possibly bringing harm to the defendant and thereby shifting the sympathy of the public, the court, and possibly the jury. Whether a victim's report of an offense rises to the level of legal harm, their experience should not be discounted. And the term complainant seems to place fault and undue responsibility on the victims of crime while also minimizing the harm victims may have experienced. And we're concerned this language will create a barrier for victims to speak up and benefit domestic violence offenders who rely on violence. DC Safe will submit written testimony regarding specific concerns and proposed changes to the bill. That said, we do support the legislation in general and are grateful for the hard work of the Criminal Code Reform Commission and the committee for always considering the impact of legislation on victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thanks to everybody on this panel. I've got a number of questions and I'm going to kind of do what I did with the first two panels, just going to work my way through as folks had testified. So, Mr. Weldon, let me start with you. You know, kind of had this idea that frequently when we're, when we're talking about criminal justice system itself, often as we hear things framed from talking about this as a focus on the potential risk to public safety presented by under incarceration. So we'll frequently hear that idea talked about, rather than the negative effects of over incarceration on those defendants and other families. Thinking tends to be something like this. If police officers, prosecutors, judges don't lock this person up, that person is just going to victimize someone else. And so that's, that is a theory that we hear. Sometimes though, we talk about financial costs of incarceration. We don't necessarily interrogate the non-financial costs of incarceration. You talked about some of the human costs of incarceration. As a policymaker, what's your recommendation? How should we think about the costs of what over incarceration incapacitation has on individuals, families, communities? And kind of to open that up to you. I'm afraid we can't hear you though. You're unmuted, but I don't know if the microphone's on because we can't hear you. It looked like you had some really good thoughts though. Let's see if we can fix that. Nope, still can't. Tell you what, we'll, we'll have other questions. I'll come back to you in a minute. I have found that in the, the bottom right, if you go to your microphone, sometimes that's the hiccup there that happens. So Nick Robinson, let me turn to you then for a second. And you know, you, you had worked extensively with the Committee on Legislation and Modernized District Rioting Statute. Can you walk us through some of the issues that we've talked about, vagueness, clarity? How do they present themselves in statute? And then of course, how do we see them present out in the community? I think you gave a great example. You know, I, I call January 6th an insurrection. I certainly see other people call it a riot, but to see no rioting charges, that seems hard to understand when there's a riot, a massive, a massive riot, but with no rioting charges.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I think that's completely right. And it's an interesting contrast is tried to kind of pull out between what happened at J-20 and the January 20th protests, which, you know, didn't get anywhere near the national attention as, as the Capitol attack understandably. But over 200 people were charged with some version of a rioting offense, again by the Justice Department using DC's rioting statute. And then during the Capitol attack, we've seen none so far, which to be honest, I think is the correct approach. It's not that there's been no prosecution, right? You, there's plenty of tools available for police and law enforcement to disperse an actual riot, to control an actual riot, and then for prosecutors to bring charges. But what we see, not just in DC, but just kind of in the history of the country, is because of this vague and overbroad language in the rioting offense in DC and in other states, there's a lot of discretion in both how law enforcement and prosecutors can use this statute. And we've seen that again and again be used in a politicized and racialized manner. And so I think what, you know, I kind of pointed out three big flaws, but I'll just, you know, kind of talk about two very briefly in the DC rioting statute. One is that you, it creates a form of guilt by association. It's not clear that you actually yourself have to engage in any type of violence or property destruction or unlawful activity to be captured as a quote unquote rioter. And then second, it's triggered just by the threat of, of violence, which is a really subjective standard. And so what you see in the Criminal Code revision is tackling both of those instances of overbreadth in a way that just makes it clear for everyone involved, both protesters or individuals who are just part of a crowd will know what to expect, but also for law enforcement and for prosecutors. And I think we're seeing more and more pushback by the courts. And I mentioned, you know, the Fourth and Ninth Circuits pushing back on the incitement to riot provision that in the federal riot act, we're going to see more of that. And so essentially, we just have this archaic statute that's, you know, sitting there that can be used in these highly discretionary ways. And so, you know, the, the fix here, I think, is a real model for the country that's being, being suggested and put forward.
I wanted to kind of hone in on something you said in your answer also though, which is that when, when highly disruptive, I'll, I'll frame it this way, when highly disruptive activity is taking place, law enforcement has a lot of tools at their disposal. I almost can take that to mean that what we have seen is the, the, the choice of using the rioting statute as the tool to stop the disruptive activity that's taking place. Damn the consequences. It's just, my, my goal isn't trying to stop this highly disruptive activity taking place. And so this is the tool that I have, could be other tools, but this is what I have. And then it is the consequence. And this is, this kind of gets to one question, which is, you know, we penalty gradation. So we have this very sharp jump in penalties between misdemeanor and felony rioting, which I think then plays out in charging decisions, subsequent plea negotiations. And just kind of want to give you a chance to help touch on that as well, to kind of bring that point home.
No, I think that's exactly right. And, and you see this, and I don't want to speak to anybody's motives about, you know, why they're arresting people under one statute and not another statute. But, you know, you know, we, we've seen elsewhere in the country that, you know, rioting statutes have been used by law enforcement to intimidate protesters. If you get charged, even just arrested with rioting, that's a stigma that goes with you. It often shows up in the paper that you're charged with rioting, whether or not you, you know, were engaged in anything yourself. And there is a famous case in Kentucky of Attica Scott, the only black female lawmaker in the Kentucky Legislature who was arrested on rioting charges in exactly this sort of situation. And then you can throw the book at, at, at folks in a crowd or at protesters in what's called charge stacking, right? Where you have a set of charges that are being brought, including a serious felony rioting charge and trying to get people to plead for a lesser offense, whether or not they should, you know, they're, they're guilty or innocent, or whether they should be going to court or not. It's just so intimidating. And we certainly, when what we saw with the J-20 protesters, you know, people had to put their life on hold for a year and a half while this whole thing went to trial. Couldn't get employment, couldn't get jobs because they weren't sure if they might be facing a felony charge and, and prison term. And so, you know, moving this from a felony to a misdemeanor, I think is really important. But, and, and equally as important is making it clear that the rioting charge now won't stick unless you yourself has already engaged in some sort of criminal activity, right? So in this way, it's more of like a penalty enhancement, the way that it's being viewed in, in the code, instead of this really kind of nebulous, no one's quite sure what it means in any of the states or if you look across the case law in, in terms of rioting. And, and I emphasized this in the beginning, and I think it's true. This came out of English common law tradition where the kings of England just wanted to be able to crack down on protests, right? And they wanted to crack down for political reasons and religious reasons. And that got incorporated into kind of the US, American common law tradition without that much self-reflection. And so I really applaud the council for having self-reflection now about what are, you know, what's the kind of targeted tools we need? We're not kings and queens, right? Like, you know, trying to suppress dissent. And so what are these tools and how can we do this in the most targeted manner? So we can address certainly legitimate, you know, public safety concerns, that type of thing, which there's plenty of tools for, while also addressing this real problem, which is that rioting acts have just again and again been used to target dissent and protesters.
Yep, okay. I, I do want to note, of course, this isn't the council's bill. I think we are self reflecting.
Sorry about that.
Well, well, it actually leads into my next question, which was, I wanted to direct to Ms. Mosherie. So it's a really great segue. Because what's being put in front of us isn't a piece of legislation that a council member or members wrote up. It's the product actually of several years of an independent agency and a big advisory group. I was going to ask you, you know, as, as a, as someone who works in this space a lot, what do you take from the fact that the advisory group, which is made up of prosecutors, defense, academic members, input from a variety of practitioners and stakeholders here, voted to support this, this package, this legislation? They're the ones who put this legislation in front of us. They're the ones who've put this forward with these recommendations. What do you think we should take away from that as we do all that great self reflecting that was just talked about? By no means do I think that when we have our, you know, when we have our government hearing coming up that we're going to get basically every single person saying they, they love every single aspect of it. But it still is very significant that prosecution, defense, the deputy mayor's office, other, everyone supported this package. What do you think we should take from that?
I think that not enough good things can be said about the process that went into this, about how, not only how transparent it was. I mean, if you go to the CCRC website, there are so many documents. We don't, we don't just have this bill before us, right? There are over almost 2,000 pages of commentary that explain every single change that is being made in the DC code. And, and that commentary includes, like you said, analysis of case law, the best practices, learnings from other jurisdictions, the, you know, the comparisons to the model penal code, which served as a, a framework for this. And, 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 and research and, and scientific data on, on, on what's going on. And in addition to superior court data on, on, you know, who, what has, what have our arrests and incarceration and incarceration rates for different offenses look like over the last several years? So I think what we can take from this is, this was an incredibly thoughtful and intensive process that included all of the right stakeholders. You know, we really applaud the council right now for having several hearings, several public hearings and hope that the council will continue to engage the public on this over the next year. And, and I think what we can take from this is this, what we have undertaken here, and I'm including myself, haven't had anything to do with this, but I, what the district is undertaking here is something that is truly remarkable and monumental. And if, if, if I, without wanting to sound hyperbolic, I think if there's one thing that the council passes and undertakes in these next few months, this should really be it. With, again, the understanding that in our perspective, this should be the floor. And from here, we should all be looking to making better improvements to actually tackle our mass incarceration crisis and the racial inequities in our system.
I appreciate that, Ms. Mosherie. Ms. Robinson, I want to try to pull you in if I can a little bit, because, you know, as Ms. Mosherie just rightly pointed out, inequities in the system. I really want to make sure we, we focus in on this, and I think this is a good piece of your testimony as well. That has to do with, so one of the goals of this whole process is to provide, you know, what are our three Cs? You know, clarity, all, all the pieces of this, right? So let's about what it, what it has currently, which is a lot of vagueness. We have vague language that fails to provide individuals with proper notice about the law. We heard great testimony earlier that from a law enforcement perspective, that vagueness can create a situation where three different officers can be on the scene of the same thing and come away with three different things they think should, should be charged with. I, I, I think it's next to impossible to have an expectation that a resident would be able to just know what, what, what means. And so the, the vagueness there, ambiguous language promotes, actively promotes discriminatory and selective enforcement. And so what I want to ask you to kind of help elaborate on for us here is, And so what I want to ask you to kind of help elaborate on for us here is, when the code is unclear, I know the answer, but I want to make sure we ask it for the record. When the code is unclear, does that mean that if you had two different defendants, they did the exact same thing? They could somehow receive different outcomes, though?
The answer to that is yes, but for many different nuances and layers, starting with whether or not you are arrested in the first place, right? I think someone talked about that, whether or not the police are in your neighborhood to begin with, whether or not discretion is used at the charging decision. There are so many points along the the continuum where the outcome can be different to answer your direct question. But what it highlights for me, when you talk about notice, I think about my clients. I cannot tell you the amount of times, and perhaps carjacking is not the best example, but let's let's use something serious to illustrate the point. I can't tell you the amount of young people I would have when I would be sitting across from them at the D C jail, trying to explain like a plea offer, right? Fifteen years or seven years, nineteen year olds. And they really thought in their mind, they were just like stealing a car, right? Or or joyriding, right? The 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 actual actions that they were accused of didn't necessarily match, right? The the title offense, carjacking, and what one would think of, and the penalties that come with it. I have shed tears many times in that same cell block at the D C jail, trying to explain to them, literally jury instructions in hand, D C code in hand, explaining them, these are the elements. This is what, you know, they're saying happened. This is the offer on the table. And not even being able to have a meaningful conversation because they were too busy being confused, just lost, confused, broken. Like, that was not their intent, that's not what they thought was happening. And now they were faced with this really serious decision. And so the harm is immeasurable. Now extend everything I just said to the mother, to the aunt, to the cousin, to the whole family, trying to explain.
Yeah, no, I I is a question to the answer too, but I appreciate being able to ask it and have you be able to help walk us through that. I think it's very important. I guess I'll ask you, Ms. Robinson, and maybe Ms. Mosherie, if you want to jump back in on this one, too. You know, we've we've had some witnesses have testified that C C R C repealed or replaced nearly all the criminal offenses that are actually charged in D C Superior Court. And I take that to mean that there are some rarely charged, or maybe even never charged offenses that'll still be on the books under this. Some might say, so what? Like, if the offense isn't, is never charged, what's the harm in keeping it around? Some people have said, well, it's actually nice to have it on the books because then you you kind of have a deterrent effect, but even though, even though no one ever actually uses it, it's just still going to have a certain effect. But how do you respond to that? Would love to get your thinking.
I'll let Nassim, who is brilliant, get into the weeds of that question. But I want to go high level for a second. When you had your last hearing on the D C jail, A G Racine talked about budgets being moral documents, right? And that was really powerful. Our criminal code is, in essence, a moral document as well. And it is our statement to our residents and to the world. This is where we stand on what's important, so important that it made into our code, how we as a society want to respond to certain behaviors, how we imagine it, how we want to rehabilitate, and what's important to us. And so it does matter what's in the code, irrespective of how much it's used or whether it's used or not. And this is particularly important as a statement to black people. That was what my testimony centered on. A lot of people talk about race, but for B P D A, it is it's personal for us because these are my people, right? And so the harm is collateral to me as well. And so it's the district saying, I hear you, I see you, I want to do it differently for the next century. What we did wrong was harmful, and we don't want to approach it the same way. So that would be my high level answer.
I appreciate that. Ms. Mosherie, anything you'd add to that?
I think that was brilliant, and I I don't have too much to add to that, other than this, you know, in addition to the this R C C A, we need to really look carefully about how the authority that we are giving our police officers and prosecutors and keeping laws on the books that are rarely used. What what the, we know that those sorts of things will be abused and will be arbitrarily enforced, often against black D C residents, against poor D C residents. And so there is a real harm to doing that. And what the R C C A is attempting to do and the direction that we should be moving into is reining in the authority of of these important actors in the criminal legal system. And an important way to do that is to make sure that we have very narrowly tailored laws on the books that, you know, Keisha talked about, someone shouldn't have to guess about whether what what they've done is is a crime or how serious it is, right? They they should be able to like, understand that. In in that same way, police officers shouldn't just have these broad powers and and have to guess at whether or not they can arrest someone for a crime. They should have clear guidelines as to what constitutes a crime and what doesn't. And so I think for that reason, it would be a a big mistake to keep those laws on the books.
Thank you. And I think maybe to both of you as well, I've got you, but Ms. Robinson, I'll begin with you as well. You know, we've talked a good bit, you've talked a good bit before about mandatory minimum sentencing and the effect that it has within the plea bargaining system. Can you also talk about some of the other weaknesses that we see within the current code? What I mean by that is how the lack of clarity impacts plea bargaining, the overlapping offenses and charges impacts plea bargaining. And then how does that impact the the attorney's ability to help advise clients regarding litigation strategy? Or even just simply navigating plea negotiations?
We need to have a separate conversation on this all by itself. But as far as plea negotiation, I like to get real basic, just human interest and human instincts. Even if you were innocent, you or I, right? If I'm facing thirty years, which is essentially a life sentence or fifteen years, and the plea is to fifteen or the plea is to seven, you have to consider it. Even if you're innocent, you, I mean, just let that sit for a second. And I can't, as a practitioner, and I am very good at my job, I can't guarantee a not guilty. I can't guarantee it. And so that's the chance that one takes, and it's their decision. And I believe, I know in my spirit, not from me pushing it, that is not something I do, that people have pled to things because the weight of the state is against them and they can't take that chance, or their family encourages them and they can't take the chance. That's not justice. That's not the legal system working as intended. It's also abused by the government. That's a fact. And it incentivizes people to plead and to make the the system more efficient and thereby warehousing black people is just a fact. What's really important that I want to focus, though, on for mandatory minimums? And this is the part that I think that they get in Europe, and I think that this goes to race. Because in Europe, right, where the majority may be white folks or whatever the majority ethnicity is, right? It's homogenous. And so people identify with people in their criminal system as themselves and their family members. So the idea of throwing people away for more often in Europe, more than twenty years, is rare, right? Because they want folks to come back to their community. Because of our history of of racism in this country, it is easy to throw black people away. That's just a fact, even if it's not on purpose. People may not think of themselves as doing that, but because that affinity is not there and they can't identify with the suffering, that's what anti-blackness is all about, you you don't really get what twenty and thirty years means. So let me give you two examples on this. I'll never forget, with one judge, I was going back and forth over a sentence. And he was like, all right, Ms. Robinson, twenty-four months. Okay, twenty-one months. Okay, sixteen months. It was like it didn't even actually really matter. But for my client, he was pulling on me, saying, I want to be out in time for my daughter's graduation. So there's a difference between May and September. There's a difference in six months. When I'm before the United States Parole Commission, they give set offs of, for people who've done twenty-five years, thirty years, set offs of two in five years like it's nothing. You have to ask yourself, what difference does two in five years make for the person who's already been punished for thirty years? At that point, you're not recognizing humanity. If there's no more programs they can take, there's nothing else they can do. So yes, I do believe that mandatory minimums are connected to racism in this country and throwing black people away. Oh, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, oh my God, did you hear me the whole time? Okay.
I heard you, I was, I said, that was, yeah, I could hear you the whole time. Sorry, I think my internet froze for a second. I could hear you, I was asking if Ms. Ms. Mosherie wanted to to add or tack anything onto that. I have a hunch she's like, nope, that was brilliant.
That was incredibly powerful, and no, I don't have.
Okay, all right, thanks. And then, Ms. Robinson, last thing I was going to ask you is, we were in the last, it was the last hearing on this, we had a really interesting discussion around code reform and how unclear elements in the current code then force practitioners, juries, basically the entire criminal justice system to rely on the red book jury instructions to fill in the gaps. What we, it was a, it was really compelling testimony at the last hearing, talking about about this and what the impact of that is. And then again, speaking to the the holes and the gaps and the vagueness of the D C code. Does that line up with your experience? I saw you smile when I said it, so I feel like maybe it did. Can you just share, from your own practice, does that experience play out?
Yes, and by the way, one of my favorite things about you is how you're always so prepared for these hearings and know the ins and outs of what's going on. That's absolutely the truth. Your staff, yes, you do have amazing staff. Shout out to the staff. The red book, I lived and died by the red book. The red book is how you try to fight for your client's life in win jury cases and hold it up to the jury and really hold them to that oath that they take to follow the red book with fidelity. But again, that's putting too much pressure. That's not the ideal way to do it. And the key word from all this criminal legal system reform is reimagining, right? We don't just have to fix what's broken by mending it with glue. We could start from scratch, and that's what this criminal reform, criminal code reform effort has done. And I recently was at a community event on this, and people were so excited about the potential of this new law. And the truth is, Chairman, I was excited, but my heart was also breaking for the hundreds of clients that didn't get the benefit of this. This is how it should be. And so really, I'm just hopeful that we can do this. And then we can, we can all sleep at night better because we feel like it was a truly, it was a fear and just process. I all, I know I signed up to fight for people. I always say, I just want it to be a fear fight. Just make it a fear fight. That's all I'm asking for. That's all people deserve.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Ms. Robinson. Ms. Levert and Mr. Battle, I want to turn to you just for a second. I guess, you know, kind of if I can pick up kind of from the same same line there, can you talk about how your your clients, your members, colleagues have been impacted by mandatory minimums and extreme sentences? Does the discussion we were just having with Ms. Robinson and Ms. Mosherie, does that line up with your own lived experiences of the ways in which it plays out for your clients? And we'd welcome that, your your feedback there.
I'll start Shannon, he can go in the first, I'll just say, I was thinking I'll start with, I just, incalculable. I mean, we were adding up all our members and how many years they've gotten and how their lives have been destroyed and their families. And the, I think the trauma and the long term impact on everyone in our city and our family is like, absolutely immeasurable. So like I was saying, we, you know, we used to have time to go to the sentencings. We go to, you know, as many as we can now. But it would just be, you just couldn't understand it because you knew the individual story of the member, and as Keisha said, your client, you knew what happened, and they're just so caught and up against confusing laws that were just so punitive. And that was not, you just knew, not only was it not going to make the person whole and feel supported, it was damaging our city, the public safety. I mean, we were talking about this, Shannon, and I, it's like, all the money of all this extra sentences and mandatory minimums, everything, the idea is obviously public safety. I mean, you know, and it's totally failed. So I don't see our members having these draconian sentences increasing our public safety. And I, it was so many different things, someone would get this sentence, and they weren't, didn't even have anything to do with the carjacking, they just heard about it. They were on the corner, or like, just so many caught up in the overpolicing neighborhoods. And then once they're trapped in that, just trying to navigate that, it just felt like there was just, there's no way out. So that's just an, oh, I mean, I have so many examples of our members, obviously, they started sixteen. Now we have women, men. Yeah, but anyway, I'll give it to you, Shannon, he obviously learned it.
Yeah, well, I have a text that I would like to read you from a guy's sister. This is my friend, he guys, he has a mandatory minimum sentence. He should have been home ten years ago. And his sister basically told me, man, my brother said, what's up? I still haven't heard anything on my motion, no anything about nothing new with this parole board stuff. As of now, and I see them on March tenth, twenty twenty-three, and nothing ever happened with them when they gave me the extra two years and seven months, good time. They gave him good time and stuff, and they've been giving him, just like his third hit. He said, nobody reached out to me, so it is what it is. I will stay focused and wait until someone comes my way. Be safe, I send my best. This is one of my, this is one of my buddies, we was in several places together. And this is an example of why the parole board should just be gone. Like, this guy, I think he on his third hit, I think he got parole and they granted, and then the commission took it away. He should have been home, like, he don't catch no shots, like, absolutely none. Probably in twenty-some years, he might have caught one or two shots, like, and it's sad, you mean? And he trying to remain focused, he trying to be strong, but he just can't understand because some people are getting parole, some people are getting released under various circumstances, capacity release, IRA, and he he just baffled, you mean, that that he's still in. Like, after man, like, seeing the parole board several times already. And this is, it just not, it just ain't fair. If he ain't had that mandatory minimum sentence, he probably would have been home, you know? And I don't know what the parole board is justifying on, justified by giving them hit after hit. But I've been around him, and he he don't do nothing, he don't get in no trouble. So yeah, I just want to share that with you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thank you. The, you know, one of the things that is also within the the proposal that was sent over, you know, looks at, you know, we we worked on, obviously, IRA and Second Look. And, you know, the drew the line, you know, up to age twenty-five. And part of what the proposal in front of us says, well, you know, you just have, kind of follows the model U S penal code and just says, after fifteen years, there should just be sentencing review, you know, you can petition for that, no matter what, no matter what the age was. And I imagine we're going to hear some people not support that and and come and say that that they don't support that. But we've also heard a lot of people talk about, you know, the, that if we take the science approach to this, that, you know, there's a age crime or an age curve to crime that people who are older essentially age out of criminal behavior. And if you're talking about somebody who who would be over twenty-five, served at least fifteen years, they're they're in their forties, they are they're forty-five, maybe fifty years old before they ever have a chance to petition. they're forty-five, maybe fifty years old before they ever have a chance to petition. How does that line up with your own experience about, you know, harm that was caused when someone was young, bad decisions, criminal acts when they, when someone was young? But then that, you know, that oftentimes talked about kind of in the academic setting, that age crime curve that you don't see a whole lot of forty-five, fifty-year-olds committing crime.
Well, I came home at forty-three and throughout my incarceration, one of the things I always looked up to older guys and listen to them. And I mean, I've encountered many guys who did time just like me, who was older than me. And and you you can see the difference. We just are not the same people at forty, forty-one, forty-three years old that we was at twenty-six, twenty-seven years old. You know, we are totally two, it's too different. I mean, from a younger adult to a middle-aged adult. So it's just, you are not the same people. You mature. You educate yourself. A twenty-something year older and a forty-three, forty-three year old. So it's just, it's just from my encounter throughout my years of incarceration, even on the streets now, you can see the difference of of guys like myself and what we are doing to positively impact our community and what and what we want out, what we want out of ourselves in our community.
Yeah, and I would say organizationally, so we've been around long enough that we have about nine hundred members in federal prison by age, you know, from sixteen to eighty-two. And like Shannon said, our members that are forty, forty-five, fifty are the most passionate, most dedicated, most motivated to give back. They they see the time lost. They see the value of family and community, and they are at the vanguard of changing the city. I mean, I would, I contend it's an imperative that we pass this to bring about public safety. We need the role models, the mentors, and we're so lucky because we do the pre-release programming. So they write to us, they read to us, they're like actively engaged, like Shannon said, in plans and how to contribute. I I often say, if it was me and I had self and I had spent that much long time, I'd be like, okay, I'm moving from DC. I don't want to hear anything about it. I am just trying to heal from the trauma of imprisonment. Absolutely not. They are right back. They're doing a clothing drive tomorrow to give out. They're like endlessly pushing the organization to to give back to the community. So I think it's an untapped resource that we have obviously locked away and we are not recognizing. So I, anyone, I contend, I'll talk to anyone who's worried about public safety and argue with them that it's the exact opposite.
Yeah, I think a lot of guys like are inspired. I get phone calls, many, me and my peers. And they hear about what we doing. And, you know, and we they want to join, they want to join in positivity impacting the society, too, if given the opportunity. So I I believe it should be done.
All right. Well, thank you both very much. I appreciate y'all's testimony. Kylie Hogan, if you're still with us, I was going to turn to you as we start to wrap up this panel. Great, you're still here. I think one, I think I heard you say, I just want to confirm you are going to get us your written testimony. Okay, wonderful. So we'll be able to get that. When we look at some of the issues you talked about, I wanted to follow up on this. How typical is it from your experience that a survivor seeking services is also involved in a criminal case against the abuser?
For us in particular, because we sit at kind of a unique nexus of a lot of district services, it is actually incredibly common about sixty to seventy percent of the referrals we get to our crisis response line are from the police after they've responded out to a criminal case. So I I was looking at the numbers, and from January twenty-first to now, we've had over fifteen thousand referrals. And I know the police, the amount of reports they actually end up taking for domestic violence is much higher, is is higher than that. So it's quite, quite a bit.
Would it be fair to say that there are some survivors who do want to see a criminal case proceeding, and there are also some survivors who don't?
Yeah, and I I see both sides of that, both people who do not want to engage, but then people who absolutely do. And I think that I don't want to discount either perspective because they're both completely valid. But I think when I talk to someone who says, I don't want to go forward, there's a real part of me that says, no problem, because it probably won't. And when I talk to people who do want to go forward, they're the ones that I often see super frustrated and challenged because they would really like to pursue some justice for themselves, and the case goes nowhere.
Yeah. Thinking about those two different groups, and I appreciate, yes, I agree with you. You know, we're not saying one is right and one is wrong. They are just distinct. Could you just share from your perspective, thinking about both of those subsets? How does a improved code, a more clear code, improve outcomes for each subset?
Sure. So I think the clarity is a huge aspect of that because often people, and I, you know, really appreciated the the testimony we had before. The common person on the street is extremely confused about exactly what's happening. What is the law? What is the code? What exactly is happening here? So anything we can do to make it more clear so people can more readily understand exactly what they're getting into when they decide to engage the criminal justice system is going to be a huge help. Both on the side of the people that maybe they need some sort of immediate intervention from a law enforcement officer to keep them safe, but maybe aren't ready to take that step. Clarity for them is going to help them decide, what do I, what do I say? And how do I approach, you know, to keep myself in the moment, but maybe not to end up with this person arrested? And on the flip side of that, for the people who are looking to pursue some justice through the criminal justice system, clarity for them in terms of what exactly are we defining here? How does that work? Would be huge to helping them feel more in control of of what they're going through. So really, on both sides, I think it's helpful.
Okay, great. Well, I know you said you're going to be, you know, sending your testimony in later. If there's anything you want to add, especially in that in that realm as well, we greatly appreciate that. So, yeah, I appreciate it. Well, you know, I want to thank everybody for their testimony on this public panel as well. I know it's been a a a long day thus far. We started at nine thirty, but these three panels have just been excellent in terms of talking through the the various issues and advocacy and helping answer a lot of questions. So I'm really grateful for it. So thanks again to everybody on this panel for taking the time. Thank you all. This is going to conclude the committee's second public hearing on Bill twenty-four dash four one six, the Revised Criminal Code Act of twenty twenty-one. If there are any members of the public who would like to submit any written testimony for any of our hearings on this bill, you can email it to us at judiciary@dc council.us by the close of business on December twenty-fourth. The next meeting of the committee is going to be on December sixteenth, and that's when we will be holding our third and final hearing on the Revised Criminal Code Act of twenty twenty-one. That hearing is is going to be reserved exclusively for testimony from government witnesses and the Criminal Code Reform Commission's Advisory Group. So there being no further business before the committee, the time is now one fifty-three PM. And this public hearing of the Committee on Judiciary and Public Safety is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.